I need to borrow one.
Yeah, and then after that, you should get a little sooner on this.
Hi, how are you? No problem. Thank you. No. Yes, indeed.
Hey, I'm going to call back into session the regular meeting of the Albany Unified School District. May we have a roll call, please?
Student Board Member Chen.
Here.
Member Rosenbaum.
Here.
Member Maris.
Here.
Member Lo.
Here.
Vice President Knight.
Here.
President Black.
Here.
For those who wish to participate, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board took no action and closed session. And our first item is to approve the agenda. Does anyone have any comments or changes on the agenda?
I'll move the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Good. The consent calendar, does anyone have any comments, questions, or items to pull on the consent?
I would like to pull the minutes.
You want to pull the minutes or comment?
I want to comment.
Okay.
Also, a comment on the minutes.
Okay.
I had some questions on, I think on the warrants, but I can't find them.
And, okay. Sorry, there's one more.
3B.
John 3B, Pat, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
Great. Okay, Alan, why don't you start with your questions or comments on the minutes?
Okay, on page 11, under Governance Team Culture. I will be recommending a new protocol when we go over protocols in the Governance Handbook early next year.
Okay.
And I'll read something like, this comes from CSBA Governance Skyline, "The role of the Board President is to recognize persons who desire to speak and to protect the speaker who has the floor from disturbance and interference."
Okay, but that's not a change, you're not requesting a change in the minutes.
No, that's just a comment.
All right. Anything else?
Not under the consent calendar.
Okay. John.
My comment was on the minutes, because I think it's worth recognizing, these minutes are some of the best that we've had. In my three years on the Board, they're very complete, and I think the credit goes to Jackie for doing this, because, you know, I look through these things and get a pretty good idea of what happened, even if occasionally I have a little change to make, which we didn't tonight, apparently, so.
Great. Thanks, Jackie.
Take it back. President Black, I have another item I wanted to have a question on, which is 5A.
Okay, so John 3B comes next.
Right, so 3B, so this is legally required by Proposition 30. This is declaring the Education Protection Account Fund, and it lists an amount of $3 million, about $3.5 million. But I just want to clarify, it appears that that money is not new money, that that money has a corresponding reduction in the funding from the revenue limit.
That's correct.
So that even though it's a separate account, it's an accounting thing, we actually aren't getting new money.
Yes, it's not new money, and it's not a takeaway, it's just a change, a re, sort of a shuffling of where it belongs.
Okay.
And I could note, this is the first 3B, there's apparently A, B, B, C, D, E, so we have two 3Bs.
This is the one I missed.
And is this included in our current budget, or will it be in the new budget?
It's included in our current budget. And in our multi-year.
And we should apologize to the public, our Chief Financial Officer was called away on a family emergency, she couldn't be with us tonight. And Ron, you had something on 5A?
Yeah, on page 54, a little bit below the middle, it says, "Every three years, the Board shall monitor the district's progress towards the adopted standards for CTE." I'd like to see it more often, possibly every year. I don't know why we would wait three years to review our progress.
Are you suggesting a change to the?
I'm suggesting changes to one every year.
So you're going to change this policy?
So it says right now, at least every three years.
All right, so I think in order to do that, we need to pull this from the consent and make it a separate item.
I'll second.
I just think it makes more sense to review our progress more often.
Okay. Good, don't let me forget when we get to action items. We need to get back to that one. So that means when we vote on the consent, we'll be voting on everything except item 5A, which has been pulled for consideration later in the meeting. So do we have any public comment on the consent calendar?
I'll move the consent calendar with that one removal of item.
Warrants also, I think, we don't only have warrants.
Oh, did you want to come, oh, that's right, okay.
Yes. Oh, sorry. Sorry, Ron. I withdraw my motion.
Somebody tell me where the warrants are. 41, 42?
They start on?
38.
38.
Okay, page 41. Comtel Service Company, this, I just wanted to bring this up, because this is something I've been complaining about for, since 2003, when I came to the district. The AHSP system, we keep throwing money into a system that doesn't work well. And here's another $3,428.79. It seems like we throw money down a sinkhole. And, you know, I know it's really difficult for the folks in the high school to deal with that. You know, I had to deal with it for four years, so please, let's keep that on the burner. It's also dangerous. It's dangerous where it is, how it is, how it operates.
We've been talking about the possibility of a wholesale change, but it's amassing the capital to do it.
And on the next page, Albany Aquatic Center, there's a Marin Pool Party, is that, was that a school event? It's about a third of the way down. 503-29329. I just was curious if we're charging folks for something that's sponsored by a school.
Do we have anybody from Marin here that would have an answer to the Marin Pool Party? Do you have?
Maybe we can.
Just gonna close a guess.
Right, we're here, there.
And I will need to refresh my memory, but I remember an incentive that the district put forth for a positive attendance program, and that may be the costs related to hiring additional staff for lifeguard duties. That would just be my first guess, given the date of 6/14/2013 being the end of the school year.
Policy had to do with, you know, we don't charge for use of school facilities, that we absorb those costs.
Okay, second day field, okay, so it was a second grade field trip, and the cost would have been the cost of?
Custodial or whatever.
No, lifeguards, additional lifeguards.
I think that might be not our policy, so maybe we can look at that. I know we have policy on school-sponsored events, that we absorb those costs. Since it's a school facility, we're in a school-sponsored event, then the school district should pay for it.
Right, I will look into that.
Thank you.
And we'll get back to you.
Thanks, Ron.
That's it.
Okay, so do we have a motion on the consent?
I'll move the consent calendar with the removal of the item on continuing on CTE.
I'll second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Student Member Chen.
Aye.
Member Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Member Maris.
Aye.
Member Lo.
Aye.
Vice President Knight.
Aye.
President Black.
I need to abstain from checks 503-27687, 503-28286, 503-29333, and 503-30319, otherwise aye. Thanks. So we are going to, let's see. Start with the elementary class size discussion.
No, motion and second, did we vote?
Yes, on the consent.
Good. Thanks. Sorry, didn't hear it.
You voted yes.
You voted yes.
I did.
It was a roll call.
A great start to the meeting.
You're gonna have to watch the tape.
Because we have many people here wanting to be in on the discussion about elementary class size. We put that first on the agenda, so we're going to review and discussion items, elementary class size.
Yes, so Jackie, I'm wondering if you could put up on the screen our little presentation, some of the information that we want to talk about tonight.
There's a couple of chairs in the front row, if any of you are brave enough to sit that close to us.
We promised not to throw things.
Right.
And we also don't mind if after your item, you just slip out. Sometimes people feel pinned to their seats in the front, like they have to stay through the whole thing, but that's not necessary.
You mean we're not gonna lock them in?
So this presentation was an effort by the Director of Curriculum Instruction, Peter Parente, and our Director of Student Services, Marcia Brown, and myself. And we've met about four times, as we tried to figure out a way to synthesize this information so that everyone could understand it rather easily. The first thing we want to start with is, in thinking about the dilemma that we are in, in terms of our class sizes being larger than we had predicted and actually staffed for, it is a unanimous opinion of Marcia and Peter and myself, we have not vetted this with our staff as yet until tonight, that we feel that the most effective model to increase student achievement is by hiring a highly qualified teacher, and that those teachers should be in straight grades, if at all possible, single grades, and that we would like to do that in a way that maintains class size TK&amp;K at 22:1, and reduce grades 1, 2, 3, 24:1. So this is something that is coming from the district office staff, is what we are saying is, we feel is the absolute best model to, for long-term, to really look at making sure that our class sizes stay there and that we hire teachers to teach those classes. So what we are saying clearly to the Board is that we do not feel that instructional aids are a great long-term solution. So with that, we thought we'd start first with what is. So just that, I'm sure you've all looked at this very carefully, but we have given you the average class sizes at Cornell, Marin, and Ocean View, as they are today. And then what we also did was, well, what would this look like next year? We can't predict kindergarten, but if we brought class size, if we added three additional teachers, what would our class sizes look like? And so you can see that we would meet our targets everywhere but Ocean View. And Ocean View, and that's not with transferring any kids from any site to site. That's just taking those three teachers, placing one at each school, okay? That would bring down our averages to our acceptable limits, and then we would have to transfer a couple of kids, a few kids from Ocean View, just in terms of mathematical, we're not making that recommendation just yet.
Well, where would the classrooms come from?
So, as we get there, I'm gonna, we're gonna go through this, and we'll get there, okay? So the first thing, the next box, a series of boxes, is lowering class size averages by adding teaching staff. Given that we feel that hiring teachers is the best way to maintain and increase student achievement, it is possible to add three teachers right now, to go out and hire three new teachers, and place them one at each site. And what we've given you here in terms of implications are some general numbers, but if you looked at the cost of hiring three new teachers, and you did it for an entire year, it would cost, on average, $80,000 for each teacher. But we know that, so take that number and divide it in half, because by the time we get teachers hired and facilities rearranged, it would be, it would probably be right after winter break. So that cost would actually be about $120,000. We'd need about $90,000 for curriculum, and, you know, there's always an assortment of things that you need when you create new classes. And in order to do that, we would create, we would have to move the three programs that ACC runs, childcare programs. Childcare would still continue, but they would have to be moved either into classrooms after school or in the multi. So you have to understand that we would displace not, we wouldn't disband childcare, but we would displace 134 students at Marin, 150 students at Ocean View, and 45 at Cornell. They would have to go to another location on the site if we took over those classrooms. We would also need to increase prep, our requirements, contractual requirements of prep. And it won't be, it is not a huge increase, but we have to, we'd have to account for that. And then we would need to completely redesign the prep schedule. You just can't just tack on three teachers requiring the kinds of prep they're going to need, we'd have to redo that. And then there is an impact to families and their students. There would be a mid-year reassignment of students to new classrooms, and if you'll just go down one, Jackie, and then we're gonna come back up and look at option B. So our recommendation, although not preferable, it's our backup recommendation, would be to create three combination, or two combination classes and a third grade straight class at Ocean View. And Marcia, do you want to just quickly, you came up with some numbers for the, Marcia has done all of the numbers in terms of the moves, our enrollment guru.
Thank you, Superintendent Stevenson. Rather than go through the specifics, I will just say that, to talk to you about the process, as I looked at if we were to balance the classes as best we could among the schools and move as few families as possible, that's where you get the combo classes. And so I took whatever was over in one particular grade, in the two usually adjacent, like, for example, at Cornell, I took the overage in first grade and the overage in second grade and put that together, and it came up to like 17 or 18, something like that. But those families would have to change a teacher mid-year, but they wouldn't have to change a school mid-year. So in looking at this particular option, those were the considerations. So I took our current numbers and then tried to reduce the class sizes evenly across the schools and the grades with as little disruption to the families as possible, recognizing that, you know, families move in and out of the district not often, but we do have those kinds of changes as well.
But there's going to be 46 students that will have to change classes within this model. So 15 students moving from school to school, and 46 students within the school having to get new teachers. So that is our very best case with the least amount of impact for adding three new teachers mid-year. Approximately $120,000 in the cost for teachers. We still think close to $90,000 in facilities, you know, and making sure everybody has everything they need, scissors and paper and computers, LCD projectors and all that. So then, Jackie, if you'll go back to option B. Now, option B really is just taking this and saying, all right, we know that we want to add teaching staff. How can, I mean, if we don't want to add it right now, why don't we do it? And we will recommend doing it '14, '15. Now, the costs remain the same, only for the full year, but you're going to, my advice and my recommendation is going to be to add least portable. and my recommendation is going to be to add leased portables to each site, one to each site. And that cost will be approximately about $75,000 per portable to cite it and get it set with electrical, water, gas, et cetera. And then, a monthly cost of about $1,000 per portable for the ongoing lease, for the portable. And we currently lease portables right now, we've got four or four or more at Cornell, and three, two at Marin, and a number at Ocean View. So, we do lease portables now. So, this would mean that there's, we would have the time to hire and train, everything remains the same, we're still gonna have to redo the prep schedule, but we could do it in the summer. We still have to think about how much more prep we're gonna have to deliver and who to hire, and there will have to be a summer reassignment for families. So, if you look on the next, which is option, one more, oh yeah, okay. So, option A for 14, 15, there you go. We're going to need to create, okay, so there's two possibilities. We can do, the first, which is option A, which is to create splits, combination classes. And the reason, the only reason we're recommending this, and we're not actually recommending it, is that we're giving you this option, is it minimizes moves for families. So, the effects would be that 18 students would be required to change schools, and you can see where they'd have to change. And of course, then, all students are changing in the, at the beginning of the year anyhow, so you wouldn't have kids making moves mid-year. It's not the most favored model here. So, the most favorable model, and we'll go down, yes, to option B for 14, 15, oh, and I do want to give you option B for 13, 14, which we do not recommend, which is creating straight grades at each site, but you would see that 58 families are affected. So, that was not even an option, that we, we put it down there so you could see that we did the exercise, but it's not something that we think is a favorable or a good outcome. Option B for 13, 14. But option B for 20, 14, 15 is our recommendation to the board, unless the board is willing to hire three teachers mid-year, our recommendation is option B, 20, 14, 15, is to hire three elementary teachers and create three single-grade classes, one at Cornell, one at Marin, and one at Ocean View. 18 students would be required to change schools, and 16, so 18 students in first grade and 16 students in second and third grade would be required to change schools. And, Marsha, how would you, how would you handle that?
Well, I just want to clarify that the 18 now first-grade students are gonna move anyway, they're currently kindergarten students at the Albany Children's Center, they're in a TKK combination.
TKK, yeah.
They're gonna have to move school anyway. I put it, we put it on this so you would be aware that we, those kids are changing schools regardless of what happens, because there's no plan to have a first grade at ACC. So, those current kindergartners, next year will be first graders, and so they will be moving schools. According to our current board policy, they would be, they, and administrative reg, in a normal year, or a typical year, they would have first choice of the schools, but because of the constraints we have with class size, they may not be have first choice. That's why I put down two to Cornell, two to Marin, and 14 to OV, because that's in these scenarios where there would be space in those first grades.
Excuse me, just, Paul, do you know, or do you know if there's anybody on staff who could bring some more chairs in? Because we have a lot of people standing out.
There's no one here in the city to, for us to access, unless there's some seats outside that you want to bring in?
I think they would have to stay.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I-
I haven't counted, but we do have an 81-person maximum for the room.
Yes.
So-
Sorry.
I'm not counting.
I hope they can hear out, can you hear out there in the hall?
Can you hear us?
Are you comfortable?
No.
We do have floor space up here.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, if you don't mind sitting on the floor.
So, our, so our recommendation to the board, with our belief that certificated staff really does the best to ensure promoting student achievement, that that's, that's would be our recommendation. I personally would have opted for option A for 13, 14, which would cause a lot of disruption to families, rather than any other option, but for the unanimous agreement from our principals, who I believe are here this evening, who said, this is far too disruptive to our children, our parents, and our staff. So, given that, our recommendation is option B for 14, 15. And then, I'd like to move on, unless there's some board questions about this recommendation.
Could I ask?
Sure.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, I'll be quick. Could I ask about these projections for how many people will have to move? Because we know that last summer, many more students showed up than expected over the summer. If more come than expected, or even if a few more trickle in between now and next fall, could those students be placed into the new classrooms instead? In other words, is there a way, do, do these moves necessarily have to happen? How does this actually play out?
So, just so you know, if we get more kids than expected, we are adding more than three teachers. Because if you take a look on the first page of the, of the staff report, you can see that we are very tight at third grade, and very tight at second grade. So, you see, the only real, easy move is our already low kindergarten classrooms moving into first grade. You see, we're trying to staff at 22 to 1, and so, that gives, that gives us, you know, a real good feeling. But if more students turn up in second and third grade, we're adding more staff.
Rather than allow-
Beyond the three.
Rather than allow class sizes to go beyond what we're projecting-
Yes.
23 and-
Yes.
24 and 22.
So, then you're talking more portables, we're talking about dropping-
You are talking, well, you're talking more portables, or you're talking dislodging the school age program over the summer, so at least they have the ability to, to plan for housing the children somewhere else in the school.
My other question was, with these portables, what happens to PE, blacktop space? I mean, we don't have any more room at Marin, for example.
You're going to lose 960 square feet at a minimum, because you know, you have setbacks as well. But we have no other option. You have, you know, depending on the board's desires, our desire is to reduce class size. We know we're overcrowded, we know we have to do something about our facilities, but there has to be a temporary measure established in order to begin to reduce class sizes.
So, I'm sorry, Pat. I'll ask one question. So, you addressed your recommendation for next school year?
Unless the board chooses to override the recommendation-
Right, well, then we'll come to that.
Then, and, and to either, and to employ three teachers right now, or to override the decision for certificated staff and to go for instructional aids.
I mean, I'm very leery of being able to find highly qualified teachers at this point in the school year, that's, that's one point. So, we need to have something to address short-term.
Yes.
Like tomorrow.
So, now we're gonna go.
Okay.
Continue to go.
Could I?
Yes.
So, at some point, are you gonna be addressing the financial implications of the different scenarios for this year and next year?
Yes. Well, I can talk to you right now about the financial implications.
I mean, beyond the actual amounts, right?
Yes.
As to what they would do-
Yes.
To our reserves, what we can afford, what we cannot afford?
Yes. So, right now, I'm looking at just this year, and anything we do to this year is going to come off of, out of our reserve. And it can only be a one-year, you know, one-year funding only. Anything beyond one year, and we know that there's going to be an ongoing cost-
Right.
For staff, for certificated staff, or for instructional aids. That has to come out of the pie that we have right now. So, you're going to be seeing some reduction of staff elsewhere.
For next year?
For next year.
Because we'll be hiring three or more additional teachers?
You're hiring three or more additional K3 teachers, and as you know, you'll get your first year interim in December, but if you look at our budget and look at our projections for our expenditures, we're deficit spending as it is for this year. We do have more LCFF funding coming, but not enough to cover the expenditures, so we will have to do some targeted, specific reductions of staff, more than likely at the secondary level.
I think, I think I can take a stab at it, but I might defer to you, if you'd like. I understand why you're saying that. I've looked at the budget. I'm not sure all these people understand why you can have a, what is it, $6 million in reserve and not just start spending.
So, the first cut at that $6 million reserve was, and is, tonight, on tonight's board agenda and in the last board agenda, of a 4% raise for our certificated staff, a 4% raise at this point for SEIU tonight, if you approve that, a 4% raise for certificated and classified management, and all unrepresented. The only unit we have not yet settled with is CSEA, but given that 4% raise, if we, if all things being equal, we are bringing our reserve down to 6% third year out, just with the raise, okay?
And so, to clarify, the state requires us to maintain a minimum reserve-
A minimum of 3%.
3% three years out, not just for this year, but three years out.
Now, the other caveat to that is the emergency parcel tax. In our third year out, we are, we must report to the county that that is the last year of the parcel tax, and it will expire. So, in the third year out, the revenue that we generate from Measure I, the emergency parcel tax, is taken out of our budget. So, by taking Measure I out of our budget and calculating the increase for our staff, our anticipated third-year-out reserve is a little bit under 6%. I'm gonna just say 6%, because it's a moving target at this point.
And so, to sort of cap that off, if we were to add option B, hiring more teachers for the fall, the cheap version, $360,000 without portables, that's gonna be a per-year expenditure-
It is.
Which-
Has to come from somewhere.
It has to come from somewhere, and so, do we know, you may not have done this, and Lori's not here, but where does that leave our reserve if we do that three years out? It's gonna be less than 6%.
It's gonna be a little bit less than 6%, but my, my, my analysis would be that, before I would, before I would present a budget to you in June, we would have already reduced the FTE at the secondary levels in order to accommodate for the increase of staff K3.
Which would, which would increase class size at the secondary level?
It could increase class size, although we've been pretty generous at the secondary level over the years, and depending on the enrollment at the secondary, you know, we are down at the middle school, we're, we're at anticipated levels at the high school, but we are down at the middle school. We, I think we could, you know, we could actually pick and choose a little bit, and I think we'd have to tighten up the electives in both, in both cases, but that would be my recommendation. I would not give you a budget in June that with a $340,000-plus expenditures, it, first of all, we wouldn't get it passed, the multi-year projection would not pass, the county would reject it.
Yeah, I'd just like to throw in one observation, and with an opinion attached, which is, before the recession that we're slowly climbing out of now hit, we had a healthy reserve, and there were people in the district saying, we have all this money in the reserve, why aren't we spending it? The districts that went into the recession with a 3% reserve required by the state experienced extensive layoffs, furlough days, losses of program.
Bankruptcies.
Sorry?
Bankruptcies.
Bankruptcies. We came through relatively unscathed. Obviously, we had some losses, as in classroom aids, but we're in way better shape than we would have been without the reserve. And that's the experience that makes us very reluctant to go anywhere close to that 3% minimum. We, because, you know, there's gonna be another recession, they're cyclical, it's, you know, it's gonna come.
So, what do we do in the interim? My recommendation to you is that we reduce class size by adding staff, and that we do it in 14, 15, and we plan for it, and we plan well, which involves moving portables onto blacktops. In the interim, we have looked at various scenarios, and we've had Lori Harden, our Assistant Superintendent, run the numbers. So, these are not, you know, back-of-the-envelope numbers, these are fully vetted numbers. So, if we were to hire one paraeducator for every class K3 at three hours a day, which never really, I mean, I would love to do it, I mean, if we had that kind of money, it would cost us, with the highly qualified, and that's the math specialty paras, $1 million and change annually. If we hired paraeducators that were not specialty, that's a lower classification, it would run $867,000 a year. Scenario two, well, we'll reduce it, let's just hire one paraeducator two hours a day. So, highly qualified paraeducators are $670,000, non-highly qualified, $578,000. Well, okay, what do we do then? What if we hired one paraeducator for every class K3, one hour a day? $335,000 for highly qualified, not highly qualified, $289,000.
These numbers are for half a year?
These numbers are November 1st. So, you know, you can, you can take some money out of there, because there's no way we're gonna hire November 1st, but I had to give Lori a target.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah, okay? So, you're gonna, you know, we can, we can figure out how to prorate that down, because you're not gonna hire all 49 paraeducators at once. Our issue, and I'm gonna let Peter talk a little bit about the issue about paraeducators, is finding them.
Well, you didn't talk about scenario four.
I'm, I think I'm gonna get to that, because that's gonna be my recommendation.
All right.
So, I'd like to first start by defining what highly qualified means under the Nickelby requirements. Highly qualified can be a number of options. 48 semester units completed at a community college, or at a university, or they can have an AA degree awarded to them from a community college, or they can take a local assessment, we contract through CODIS, and that's a series of 120 questions in math and English. For highly qualified in mathematics-
Okay, wait, wait, that's the lower classification. So, those requirements are the lower classification of paras. Now, Peter's gonna talk to you about the specialty para.
Sorry, thank you for clarifying, that's the baseline qualifications. For a specialty para, one that's considered highly qualified, the more expensive numbers, we take one of those options and we add 12 more additional units in mathematics, or a special local assessment. One of the additional pieces that we've explored is understanding whether or not our current labor market could produce or have available to us these employees. We're finding that to be very challenging, especially if we were to climb into numbers such as 20, or 30, or 40 people, and trying to identify them and finding them as soon as possible to come into the classrooms. And for that, we presented that gradated effect on scenario four. So, to mediate the effects, that we know that we don't have the employees lining up at the door, they're not all coming to us highly qualified or basically qualified, we put a scenario in to try our best to try to find 14, if we were to staff at 27. So, for every class, we have 27 students, we'd need to find, right now, as soon as possible, 14. If we want to staff every classroom who has 26 or 27, we would need to find 24 paraeducators. And if we need to find 25, 26, or 27, we would need 26 paraeducators. The last time that we went out for paraeducators was in very early October, we had 14 applicants, and we did not get a chance to screen all of those applicants through interview processes, but we had 14 applicants for that.
Was that specifically highly qualified, those were math paras?
Those were highly qualified for math, part-time.
So, if we expanded the-
If we expanded, but we're still, in all scenarios, we're looking at or two, or three hours a day, and- hours a day and we really anticipate that it's the number of hours per day and not being able to find or post for full-time, but in fact, the issue of part-time, the, the idea that being part-time and being available specific in these hours too, it's not two or three hours at any time during the day when they're available, it's very targeted towards the instructional hours between 9:30 and 1:30 or 2 o'clock. And that's the challenge is identifying that many people.
So I should just say that I've, I've identified a possible source of maybe between 15 and 30, at least on the lower qualified, maybe some of them actually highly qualified through a new program at, at one of our community colleges, which you might be aware of.
I am aware of that, yes. And that's a wonderful program. I'm, I'm looking forward to continuing to serve as an advisory committee member, but that's a long-term. And I, we were trying to propose issues that we could do in the next two to four weeks, depending on direction of the work.
The question that I posed to, to that program was next week. Could you round up folks? So at least we could try.
So just as a response, as a additional piece of information in the, in our ability or our quest to find people, we posted on EdJoin and on Craigslist and all the local e-trees. Pretty much amassed the communication systems in our local area.
So what is going to be the staff recommendation? In long, rather heated conversations with our Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, she said that there is absolutely no way that we can sustain paraeducators long-term because it is far more expensive than adding certificated staff. So that's number one. Secondly, anything we do, we would recommend that it only be for this year only and that we hire certificated staff for the future and, and no more than $200,000. Lori feels that our budget can, and that will come out of our, the, our ending balance, our reserve. She will not be able to sustain anything more than $200,000 this year. So that puts us at scenario four.
Scenario four with the...
Which is?
Only the first bullet in scenario four.
Right. So that is hiring one paraeducator for every class that is at 27, and that's two hours.
With the highly qualified.
And that's the, and if you went to non-highly qualified, okay, that's $165,000. If you went to highly qualified, that's close to $200,000.
Why would we need highly qualified for these specific positions?
Well, initially, we had, had...
Because we've hired those already, the math, the math paras.
But not for K3.
Okay.
The, the initial, my initial wish, desire was to hire a, a specialty math paraeducator, a math paraeducator throughout the district K3 with these class sizes. I thought that it would be beneficial to, you know, to assist teachers who have large class sizes in implementing a very rigorous math program.
And then I conducted an assessment of all of the K3 teachers' instructional programs between 9:30 and 2 o'clock-ish, depending on the grade level. The early bird, late bird hours, of course, capture the English language arts instruction. So all teachers teach their math programs sometime between 9:30 and 1:30.
So you've, you've actually gone out and spoken with a...
I actually conducted a full survey. Every teacher responded and told me what time they teach math. No, I didn't ask them what they would prefer, but I asked them, "When do they teach what subject?" I asked them, "When do you teach math?" And the math... Yeah, thank you. An online survey using our Google accounts. And that asked every teacher to tell me when they were teaching their math program.
I just want to make sure because even I haven't heard that and I'm sure the public really wants to hear, you know, what you've done. And I, I think, you know, you've done a solid job in it.
I didn't bring those tonight because I didn't want to skew it towards too far because it does create an implication in costs, but if we're going to hire a paraeducator and then I'm going to put them in a classroom and the teacher happens to be teaching math, my preference is that they know their math.
Yep.
And my preference is that they know what we're doing with math.
Got it.
Currently, yeah.
The $200,000 number, could you explain the rationale and what's it between 200 and $300?
Right now, we are projected to deficit spend. So it's got to come out of our reserve, right? We also know that we usually have an ending balance, but if you noticed, our ending balance every year has reduced because we've gotten very, very good at predicting how we were going to hire staff and what we're going to do. And that ending balance, last year, was just over $200,000. So that's where Lori came up with that number. You know, you of course can override anything that staff, you know, tells you to, that, that is prudent to do. But that was Lori's recommendation.
Shall we take some comments from the audience?
Yeah.
Okay, so anyone who wants to get up and speak, please come up to the podium. We'll ask you to restrict your comments to three minutes or less. Does, can someone take the timer?
Is it appropriate to ask questions?
Sure.
So in your plan, you had, you had seven students go from Marin to Cornell and seven or eight go from Cornell to Ocean View.
Yes.
What is, why would you disrupt double the amount of families when you could just have seven go from Marin to Ocean View?
Marsha?
Are they?
They're different grades.
It said first graders, though. Can you go back to that part?
Yeah.
But that's option A, you mean?
It's across all three.
So I'm sorry, where are we? Which one?
Option B for 2014. There's another, in both of the things that I saw, it looked like you were...
Those are different grades.
So is, no matter what, you're going to be moving kids to different schools?
Yes, no matter what.
As you come up, could you identify yourself and before you...
Sure, I'm Edwin Park. I'm a parent of first grader. For a couple of points, first, the recent collective bargaining agreements have had only a modest effect on budget reserves. The total net cost according to the budget document is only $255,000, taking into account all the revenue and other spending changes. So the reserve ratio only declined 2.2 percentage points. So it's very modest. In other words, the labor agreements only cost 3.7% of the reserve fund that would otherwise have been spent. Okay, so first, first point. Second point, seems like the cost of adding paraeducators seems elevated, at least to a few of us parents. Backing up the numbers, assuming full year, I'm getting hourly costs of $40 per hour, including, I assume, fringe benefits for highly qualified and $35 for not qualified. And as we understand it, the cost should be more like $25 an hour, which is consistent with the original job listings for the math paraeducators. Now that, you, you get, you take those numbers, you put it in, you know, it would cost about $240,000 starting in January 1 to get two aides in the rest of 2013, 2014. And so that would have a very modest effect on the, the reserve ratio, 0.8 percentage points, costs only 3.6% of the remaining budget reserve balance, and that's well above the statutory minimum 3%. We're way above 3%. And if we project out to the next year for 2014, 2015, the decline in the ratio would only be about 1.8 percentage points compared to what we are currently projecting, taking into account the two collective bargaining agreements. So again, very, very modest cost to the budget. At least speaking for myself, I don't support breaking up existing classrooms or forcing families to switch schools. That's why many of the parents are pushing for paraeducators, at least as a short-term solution. And finally, I urge the board to put on the agenda as soon as possible, options for how to extend the parcel tax. One of the reasons that there is a major deficit in 2015, 2016, and why there's zero funds coming down is the expiration of the parcel tax. And we are, you know, if we want to have sufficient financing to reduce class size, we need to think about revenues and that includes both renewing the parcel tax and potentially expanding it. And the board needs to have that on the agenda as soon as possible.
So could we answer, it sounded like there are two questions asked, but one is about the parcel tax and one is about the, the cost, hourly cost of...
Right, so let me address the parcel tax quickly and then...
And also, I think there needs to be clarification. Is that true about the reserve considering the bargaining agreements? Let's clarify the numbers and the percentages.
The numbers we know.
And the numbers and percentages are also in the board packet.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, let me address the parcel tax briefly. The board is very aware of the parcel tax situation. We've been discussing it. We are going to propose tonight, and I think we will agree, to have a special meeting just to discuss the parcel tax probably next week. Not, yeah, to discuss the parcel tax and other financial matters, but we are going to bring that up as soon as we can because we want to have it on the November ballot. So that is definitely a concern.
November 2014.
Right. You want to address the...
Yes, so a number of things were brought up by Mr. Park in terms of our numbers. So when the business office created the numbers that you see before you, you have to take into account the full family or, you know, we actually calculated it, two-party medical costs, and you cannot just assume that people are going to only work one or two hours. There are many paraeducators that are on staff right now that would, that may very well want to expand their hours by, you know, adding the hours to their current jobs. So with that in mind, Lori created this and she stands by her numbers in terms of the costs that she has projected, and that includes all the statutory benefits and two-party health and welfare.
Yeah, and again, I apologize that our business officer couldn't be here tonight because of a personal emergency, but if, what I suggest, if, if you feel that your numbers don't match these and that you have, you know, grounds for that, please send an email to the district and we'll have our business officer give you all the numbers you need to, because, speaking personally, but I think I can speak for the board, we trust her and we believe her numbers.
But can we publish those on the...
Absolutely, sure.
To make sure that the public sees what we see.
Hi, I'm Susan Adams. I'm president of CSEA. You may have noticed us all back there in our red shirts tonight. We wanted to show up and show our faces. We're represented in this group. We have clerical people, attendance clerks, secretaries, clerical aides. We have special ed and resource paras. We have a campus aide. Among our people, there are computer support personnel, library techs, ACC paras, but no general ed classroom paras because four years ago, they were all laid off. And I wanted to remind everyone that many of those people are still in the district. And I also wanted to mention that all of us, regardless of what our classification, consider ourselves to be highly qualified. Many of our paras have BAs or even higher degrees and work in their jobs because it works well for their family situation. We have a highly educated group of people working in CSEA here in Albany. So even if you get some of those lowly general regular, not special ones that cost less, honestly, we were good and our people will be good. And there definitely would be people who will want to add hours. Some of our people moved over to Albany Children's Center when they were laid off before. They may want to move back. I don't know. I can't say that. I don't know if this is what you should do. I mean, obviously, this is something that has to be decided by the board, but I just wanted to mention these things that I wanted to showcase our people tonight because I'm really proud of the group of people that I work with. I'm proud of the support that they provide to our teachers and our staff and I want them to be appreciated. I wanted to remind you that we are here for all of you. That's what we do. And tomorrow, we're meeting to negotiate with the district. We're hoping for a fruitful and collaborative negotiation that will allow us to continue as full, fully supported members of the Albany Unified School District Family of Workers. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jeannie Kahina. I have two at Marin. I was here about two months ago throwing all kinds of common core questions at you and I'm glad to be following up with the previous speaker because I just wanted to add my personal experience with chomping at the bit to apply for this math paraeducator that was put into my mind at the end of the school year last year. And all summer, I was just waiting and waiting and I, I got my application in. And after having a long heart-to-heart with our principal, I realized that it wouldn't work out for me because it is one hour a day. And just to add to what Mr. Parenti was saying, I'm one of those people. You know, I am highly qualified. I'm a credentialed teacher. I would love to, you know, help out in the classroom. I already volunteer in the classroom, but if you're going to pay me one hour a day to go three times a week, I'm not going to do that. And adding para-hours to current employees who are already in the district makes sense, but I agree, you're going to have a hard time finding one or even two-hour-a-day paras who are willing to come in for those, you know, it was a 10 to 11 time slot and that's not really realistic for most people. So I just wanted to support you on that assumption.
Thank you. Could I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
Actually, I don't know, this may be more for Mr. Parenti, but if, is there a way to structure these para-hours so that one para can do two, two-hour slots if we decided we wanted two hours? And would that be, you know, something that would be attractive to you?
I would go for that. I think anything beyond what was offered adds a little bit, but you know, three hours a week is not...
Thank you.
I could speak to that. I wish I had brought those numbers. I didn't, and I appreciate the clarification. In fact, I could pull up my laptop with Google and bring those numbers up. The, but I would then have all the teachers' names and their math schedules up here. But the majority of teachers start their math instruction at 9:30. About half of that number then starts at about 10:30. And then there are breaks and/or prep periods and/or enrichment classes in between and lunch. And then there's one more hour or so that math is taught, but it's not a consistent, say, 20, 20, 20, where I could hire one person to go one class, two class, and three class and hire 20 paras and then cover all three classes. The bulk, about 60% of our teachers teach math at around that 9:30 slot. So in essence, it is possible to hire a para and have them cover about two hours. One of the most challenging things about that, though, is there's a lot of downtime in between those hours after the 10:30 slot, 10:30 to 11:30. Then from 11:30, it could be up until 1 o'clock or so that they don't kick back into work.
And would it be just kind of wasteful to have a math specialist in the classroom during other times, during non-math times? In other words, could they have part of their time be during math, would be paying for the highly qualified person to be there during non-math, just in order to attract more people?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't go as far as wasteful. However, if we were to let it go more flexible, then some of our students would be getting a much lower adult-to-student ratio during math. Other students would not be getting the lower student-to-adult ratio during math. And so then it would get a little bit tricky about how you structure math instruction or what kind of access students have.
Out of curiosity, would there be, would there be teachers who would be interested in changing the time that they teach math in order to have a qualified aide in there?
Yeah, thanks, Ryan. I was going to suggest if there are any teachers in the room who wanted to comment on that.
I'd like to hear that.
We'd like to hear that.
I see one.
I see a few teachers.
Well, there are quite a few teachers here.
So I, you know, I think it's possible.
That's a partial solution.
I think it's possible. I think the teachers, if given the opportunity to have instruct, you know, paraeducators in the class, would do whatever it took to change their schedules in order to make it work. That's my impression, but we haven't really vetted that with the staff.
I will shed light on the issue. My name is Diane Meltzer. I teach second grade at Marin. Last year, I had an instructional assistant because I had 27 kids last year and I had an aide for two hours every day from 10 o'clock to 12 o'clock. She worked two hours a day. I saw her paycheck. She made $16.78 an hour plus some other things that had to be paid for, a total of about $25 an hour. She was not offered health benefits because she only worked two hours a day. She worked 10 hours a week. When we looked at this, the teachers, the parents, we looked at it in that way. We're not asking for four-hour aides. We're not even asking for three-hour aides. We're asking for two-hour aides. We're asking for 10 hours a week. We teach, we teach at Marin. We teach from 8:30 to 9:30 and then we have a 10-minute recess and then a few minutes to take attendance. And so if your aide comes at 10 o'clock, you're fine. So you teach from 10 to 10:50 and then the aide has time to go to the bathroom, just like you. And then we teach from 11 to 12. There's no downtime. There's no relaxing. There's no enrichment. It's straight academics in the morning unless you have a prep period. If you have a prep period, then you say to your aide, "Go next door. I bet that teacher needs help right now." Because 27 kids and two adults is still not great. So there's no downtime for aides. So I'm, one of my questions is that I trust Lori. I know that she does math well and she knows what she's doing, but when we're offering a 10-hour-a-week job, there are no benefits offered. I've been told that aides, I've been told by an aide, that she has to work 50% of the day in order to be offered health and welfare. Are there instructional assistants in the room? Are any of you getting health and welfare? Do you get it if you only work two hours a day? Could you please stand up and say that on the record, please?
We have to work half-time.
You have to work half-time. Have to work four hours a day. These are aides. They're working for you now and they don't get.
Well, let me, let me, yeah, so everyone in the district, no matter how many hours you work, if you are on FTE, now if you're hourly, you do not get offered health and welfare. The aides last year were hourly.
Right. And so we're asking them to be hourly again this year.
You can't.
Two hours a day.
You can't do that.
Why not?
Because you're taking jobs from CSEA. So this is, so we would, they would have to be employed by FTE.
Wait a minute, I don't understand that. Can you explain that?
Sure.
Am I taking a job from the people who are sitting here now? Because God knows, I don't want to do that.
Right, so there are, there are paraeducators out there right now who have transferred to ACC, that have transferred all over the district in order to preserve their job, who might want to come back. If you offer it hourly, you are basically precluding them from, from increasing their FTE. So anyone who has FTE in this district, no matter how small, is offered a pro-rata amount for health and welfare.
Okay, but did any of those people?
You don't have to work four hours. And if you think you have to work four hours, you need to come to personnel right now, tomorrow morning, tomorrow morning, because every single employee has access to health and welfare in your pro-rata position.
Not, not full?
Not, not, unless you're working full.
Right, obviously, right. But the thing is that last year, the aides for the 27 were hired hourly, and they were not offered any health and welfare. And my question is, why can't we do that? Once we've made sure, I mean, we can even send out letters to every single CSEA employee saying, "Do you want this job?" I don't want to take a job from somebody who would want it. And if it requires giving them health and, health and welfare, absolutely, they need to have it. But none of them have applied for this job. So what are we waiting for?
That begs a very good question, Diane. If we posted internally and asked any member of CSEA whether they wanted these positions, open them up first internally to those staff that are members of our unions, and then we still have a need for another 15 aides, could we make those hourly? Is that what you're saying, right?
Yes, and the other thing that I want to say is that I really appreciate that you've expanded it from edjoin to other things. I've been on the phone with people from UC Berkeley, and they're right in our own backyard. And these students are there, they have set schedules, and there is an employment office at UC Berkeley, four students, four graduate students. They need the money. They are more than qualified. Why aren't we using that, that wonderful opportunity? Thank you, that we have. So I wanted to ask that you expand your, your, go ahead. This is, this is what it's like when you're a 61-year-old teacher. Okay.
Can I clarify?
At least I haven't used the wrong word yet.
Just to give, I'd like to step in here for a moment and give a little credit, something I forgot to give credit to Cynthia Attia for is that she did say that included were those postings sent to the local colleges and universities. So she did say that she reached out and sent them to all of their offices.
All right. Okay, and the only other thing I want to say is that we appreciate your checking in with our principals about what would be good, and we would have liked that you check in with teachers as you develop these kinds of things. And we would have, you know, I'm sure parents, parents have been working so hard, and I'm sure they would have liked a voice. And we appreciate the fact that you are not going to move children mid-year because that's the worst thing for children. We appreciate that you're knowing that, so thank you.
So is, maybe, I think Ron's question is something to think about. Should, is that a possibility? Can we do?
So I need to check with the CSEA president and their area rep, their manager, because, you know, you just, you can't.
But it's a, I guess.
We want, I mean, I want to definitely honor our commitments to our unions. There's no doubt about it.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, but I just wanted to say that if that were to happen, if that were to be possible, it would take a little bit of a, of the burn off. And that we should consider that later this evening when we talk about what we're going to do.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Cheryl Thies, and I have a second grader at Cornell School. I also work as an education advocate at the Disability Rights Education and Defense Fund, so I'm here sort of in a dual role. I just want to remind everyone that there are hidden costs in not hiring these paras. And those hidden costs relate to children being asked to be assessed for special education when they may not need to be because they have not received the right instruction. Children receiving tiered interventions, more concentrated, more concentrated services because we haven't been able to, the teachers simply don't have the time to provide the instruction to them.
We've, we've lost our.
Yes, I see that. Shall I yell or just keep going? Sounds like a ton again. I'll just act like I'm at home. I have five kids. I just, you know, I just think that sometimes it's, it's that old saying about a penny saved, pound foolish. I think that there are costs all over the district that aren't necessarily being, well, they may be being tracked, and I, I'm just not aware of them, in terms of having to do interventions and get one para in for one child. In my child's case, we're trying to get in math support for her to avoid assessing her for special education because she's really struggling. Why are we going to put one para in for my kid when we could put one para in for, you know, 24 kids or 27 kids? I also want to just put, be really clear, like, I am completely a member of the Cornell community. I appreciate my child's teacher. I think she's smart, she's here, and she's flexible, and she's doing everything she can do. But, you know, if my little girl who's had neurosurgery, spinal surgery, has been through hell, doesn't get a break because a teacher just can't give her one at the moment that she needs one, then my child internalizes that school's a really hard place, it's a difficult place to be in, that she's not a good learner. That's not her teacher's fault, and that's not my child's fault, but that is a reality. And what happens is you pay for that at the middle school. You pay for that in fourth and fifth grade. You pay for that at the high school in other ways. So I realize it's really hard money to pin down, but I think it's really important when you're thinking about these costs, about, you know, exactly, you know, we have a short-term problem, we have a long-term problem. And I wouldn't, I don't envy you your position in terms of trying to figure out how to move this around as it's a moving target, but I just want to make sure to speak out on behalf of the students with disabilities who need inclusion time, who have teachers who could, who are highly-qualified general education classroom teachers who have so much to give them, but they don't have the time. So all the children in that classroom, including our children with disabilities, miss out on that opportunity because the teacher isn't able to use what the skills the teacher actually has brought in, and many of whom went to school just to do this kind of thing, and they can't do what we've hired them to do, what they're trained to do, and what they're so good at. So I hope we think about that moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Branoff. I have a child in first grade and fourth grade at Marin School. Want to reiterate some of the, the points about not moving kids this year, really looking at paraeducators. I really do think that there are, there is some confusion around the budget, and so to have more clarity there. I also think in terms of where the job was posted, I think it did not go out on the E-tree. I think there, there seems to be, if, if one of the problems that you're citing is that it wasn't advertised, that it was, that you're not getting enough response, I, I would really question where the posting has gone and, and where we can be helpful. Again, I really feel like the parents and the teachers in this room are here to help solve, you know, the problem and try to help improve education in this district. And if we can help get the job announcement out, if we can help think through some of these problems, we're really here to help. And that includes the parcel tax. We asked on October 22nd that it be put on an agenda. I haven't seen it yet specifically for us. I don't know if next week, when you said there's going to be a special meeting, if that's going to be open to the public, but, okay, great, because I think, again, there's many of us who really want to help with that. And I already mentioned really looking at the budget figures, and hopefully, we'll, we will be providing you with some of those figures to see where the discrepancy is. And then for next year, moving forward, if we do add classes, and I just noticed, you know, I'm, my kid who's in first grade and with 27, I think could really benefit from paraeducators or smaller classes. My child who's in fourth grade, even looking back at third grade, I feel like she was so much more older and so much able, the teacher was so much more able to handle third-grade students and what's happening in kindergarten and first in particular. I really think there's a big difference between what children are able to do on their own if we have to make choices. And I know the choices were made by class size rather than class age, but something to think about as well. And, but, but for the scenario, option B, 2014, 2015, it says that by putting another classroom, there would be, it would be Marin first grade that gets another classroom. So my first grader now in a class of 27, I'm not clear how that will be reduced next year if the scenario for adding a class only affects next year's first graders, not next, not next year's second graders. So that was given.
Do you want us to respond to that right now? I think Marsha can.
Well, that results in some children changing schools for next year. And that would be second graders moving from Marin to Cornell and some third graders moving from Cornell to Marin.
Okay, I missed that. Okay, thank you. Okay, I think that's it.
I just have a really quick question. Can you just, oh, what? Can you just quickly tell us for next year, adding the classrooms at the three different schools or three different grades among the three different schools, exactly which school at which grade is getting a new classroom? Can you just lay that out? Like, I can kind of deduce from here, but I just want to double-check my math, basically. Thanks.
You want me to answer that?
Sure, Marsha, why don't you take that?
Well, every time I look at this, it looks different. Just, I'm just going to be really honest because I can shuffle those numbers in different ways. I keep trying to find a way to displace the fewest families. So right now, that option B, I'd have to go check my, my backup doc data, which I brought, but I'd need to dig through it. But I believe it involves an additional second grade at Cornell, an additional third grade at Marin, and a, no, it says Cornell second grade, Marin first grade, and Ocean View third grade. Yeah. So, but I looked at this again today and I came up with a different version. So it, it just, it's, it's not as clear-cut as I'd like it to be because it depends on how you want to shuffle the numbers.
And it doesn't take into account the fact that there may be new enrollment in those grades?
Correct. And we also have LCFF, class size reduction formulas that we have to consider by school, not by grade or by district. So that's another factor that goes into these calculations.
Would you, would you clarify that?
Sure.
LCFF reduction, class size reduction by school?
Yes. When the state passed the new funding formula, LCFF, which we're currently under this year, they included a provision to reduce class size K3 to 24 by the year 2020, 21. We don't have regulations, we don't have guidelines yet from the state on how to calculate that. Our best information that Lori Hardin has gotten from the county offices and the state is a, a formula where you reduce your class, your, your current class sizes by 10% every year until you get to 24 at those four grades, K through three. However, we don't know, are they using P1? Are they using P2? Are they using annual? We don't know what data they're using to calculate that. And the way the law was written, it's not by grade level and it's not by district, it's by school site. So we have to take, I'll, I'll try to make it sort of understandable. You add up all the K through three students that you have.
Yes.
You divide it by the number of teachers in those grades, and that's your class size average at that school. And that's the target number we have to shoot for at those three, our three schools. However, we are kind of shooting in the dark right now because we don't know what the formula is, we don't know what the data is that the state's going to require us to do.
Thank you.
But what we were talking about tonight is actually finding a way to reduce class size next year.
Faster.
To 22 to 1 in kindergarten and maximum of 24 to 1, 1 through 3.
Right. So we're trying to go faster than the state's requiring us to do that.
But I just want to make sure that's clear.
Yeah, right.
No matter what the state says, this is what.
That's our target.
We are targeting.
Always remembering that we don't know how many kindergartners we will have next year.
That's true, too. But what I heard the superintendent say was that if we have more students than we anticipate, we will add teachers.
And, yes, and rooms.
And rooms.
Yes.
I like that.
Hi there, I'm Debbie Rosenfeld-Caparez. I have a fifth grader at Cornell and a first grader, and I'll be really brief with my comments. I fully support if, you know, the teachers say where they want the hours for paraeducators is math, but I've spent a lot of time volunteering in the classrooms at various grades, and my general assessment is the teachers just need help. I mean, I've been in the classroom for math, I've been in the classroom for reading assignments, so I just want to put my vote forward that if, if just getting help in general, I think it will help the teachers. I mean, I, I know that parents are just amazing at all the schools as far as stepping up during this tough time where there haven't been paraeducators, so just wanted to voice my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak here. Rebecca Long, I have a kindergartner and a third grader at Marin. I just wanted to talk about the numbers again a little bit. I mean, that is ultimately, you know, the big sort of constraints that we're wrestling with, and I just want to put out there again that, again, I'm really appreciative of, you know, how conservative the board is being, and I totally recognize the struggle, you know, that the district has gone through with the state recession and whatnot, but we are in a different time right now. The new school funding formula is positive for the district, it's positive for the state. I'm sure you're well aware, we're having an economic boom right now in the Bay Area. The state income taxes are going to be going way up next year, and there's a formula for how that money trickles down to schools, and schools are guaranteed a share of that. So, you know, I think that we're operating almost as if we're still in post-traumatic shock from the recession. And I think you guys need to take a deep breath and look at the budget, and you have a $6.6 million reserve, okay? I've checked other districts locally, Arinda, Berkeley, Mill Valley, it's way above any of those. And congratulations, seriously. I mean, you're doing a great job. I'd much rather you be conservative to some extent, but I really feel like, you know, the way you're talking about these options as if it's this really zero-sum game above $300,000, I'm sorry, you have, you could spend a million and you would still be sitting very pretty, okay? The state, just so everyone knows in the room, what's required by the state for 3%, and that's what Berkeley's doing, by the way, is 1.1 million, and you have 6.6. So, you know, you have plenty of money. This is an annual budget process. I get that the county requires that you do a forecast, and that's, you know, good due diligence, but the notion that Alameda County isn't going to allow you to do a one-year-by-year budget where you have, you know, a 10% reserve, say, is crazy. They're doing it for BUSD, no problem. So, you know, I just don't buy that, oh, if you hire paras or if you hire new teachers for K through three, you're going to have to cut in the high school. I, I think you have a lot more money to play with. And I think the parcel tax, again, is, your operating deficit right now is because of the parcel tax. I mean, what, the increase in the operating deficit is all due to the parcel tax. And if we just increased the parcel tax by about $150 per parcel, we would be golden. You would have no operating deficit. So, you know, we're actually really lucky. We're in a situation. know, we're actually really lucky. We're in a situation where, you know, it's very feasible to become a much more, you know, flush district in terms of having lower class sizes. And I just think, you know, take a deep breath and let's think about what our ideal scenario is instead of operating in this extremely conservative environment. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Wendy Musell, and I have two children who have the good fortune to, one is in kindergarten with Maggie, who's here, and also Diane, who is a taskmaster and outstanding teacher, both of them are. And I'm thrilled to have them in the Albany Public Schools. And I just want to take a moment to step back, to say, a lot of us costed out, what is it going to take to send our kids to private school? Or can we look in the Bay Area and decide, can we send our kids to a viable public school? And when I made that analysis with my wife, and who does volunteer and has a Juris Doctorate, she volunteers for both classrooms, so you do have highly qualified parents out there, we determined, back then, five years ago, it'd be 420,000. And so we decided, we looked around and we bought a house here for a reason. It had low student-teacher ratios, and it had excellent education. That's why we bought a house here and paid way too much money. So what I think that having, not having foresight as to who your community is, these are people who will pay extra for these houses, pay extra, and property taxes to get a good education, which is hard to come by these days. So if you take class sizes of 27 and you continue that through time, you're going to get a different demographic, different parents who volunteer in the classroom, your property values are going to go lower, and therefore your pool of money is going to be smaller. It becomes a shrinking pool. And that is what is happening by decreasing the quality of education. And I think a lot of this could have been avoided. Last year, we heard there was going to be 24, I believe, per classroom. Suddenly, we have 27. I think that's poor planning. And I think some of these things could have been avoided with better planning. Additionally, looking at the pool of money we have, I don't know why we're looking just at money to credentials or people who are actually providing instruction in the classroom. We are a very small district. It's one of the things I like about it. It's a community, we know each other. We have a lot of administrators, and they make a lot of money. Why are we not looking at the amount of administrators that we have and whether that's necessary? Could we condense some of that? Could we perhaps get rid of an administrator and use that money, which could be frankly near $200,000, and provide our needs? Additionally, are we looking at consultants? How much are we paying consultants and why do we have consultants? For such a small district, we should be able to do a lot of things in-house. We have outstanding parents with a lot of talents out there, who I'm sure would be willing to devote for free some of these needs for which we currently pay for. So it's unfortunate that I'm hearing a, we can't give the 3% or 4% if you want your aides, a zero-sum game. And I think we should open up the numbers to determine whether we are spending our money wisely for the size of the district and looking ahead for the, for the health of the education of our students.
So just briefly, I'd like to comment on that. You know, I'll speak for myself because the board hasn't spoken for the board yet. But I, you know, I heard a guarantee for next year of 22 to 1 and 24 to 1. As far as I'm concerned, and hopefully the rest of the board, we will hold the administration responsible for that. So in my mind, the only thing we haven't decided, I mean, we haven't decided that. I've made my decision already where I stand. We haven't talked about the short term. So as far as, you know, administrative ratios, I think our superintendent can speak to that. But I, you know, I know that ours are pretty much the lowest in the county. That I, you would have the figures more than I would for the current time.
And just, I'm going to let you speak, sir. And just one more comment. I mean, in all the letters that I've been reading from you and in all the comments that I've heard from you, I think there is clearly a theme. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think you should definitely, if we do decide to have that, the special meeting regarding the parcel tax, you need to tell us clearly, if you think even 24 to 1 is too high, you want it, you want it lower and you're willing to pay for it, you need to tell us. We need to hear that. I, you know, I hear the themes of it, I hear, you know, mumblings about it, but it hasn't really been a very, very clear discussion yet. And as we go into talking about the possibility of a parcel tax and what it would pay for and what you would want, what your vision of education is for your children, you have to let us know so that we, we have a clear understanding. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. And that also, in my mind, includes maintaining at least what we have in the secondary as well.
Okay. Let me just intercede here just a second. It's my job, so I have to do this. We are running now about 20 minutes behind schedule, and the board has yet to weigh in. And some of the people on the board do like to talk. So I'm just going to ask that you keep your comments down to the minimum. We do want to hear from all of you. But if you're just agreeing with something somebody else said, please just say, I agree. If you've got questions that can be answered offline, you know, send us emails and we'll get back to you. Because I don't want to cut anybody off, but, you know, if we go on too much longer, we'll have to do that.
And I can promise you that, at least I have, and I believe everyone on the board has read all the dozens and dozens of letters and seen them and really taken them to heart. There were so many that I know I couldn't respond to most of them that I got. It was just, there wasn't enough time, or I would have.
Sir, please go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. No, no problem. My name is Sammy Cio, parent of a kindergartner and first grader at Marin. Want to thank the board and the district staff, and of course, all the teachers and paraeducators here, the parents, for all the work you've done. And I really do appreciate it as a parent and as a member of this Marin community. I have a couple of questions as well as, you know, maybe a comment or two. And it's about the moves. That, you know, it's, how, I mean, who decides if children have to move? And who of those children are going to get to move or have to move? And as a corollary to that question, what if we don't want to move? As parents, I mean, what if we don't want to move our kids? Then what happens?
So, you know.
Eeny mee miny moe.
So we usually have a process, and that process has varied. We have done last in, first out. We have done a lottery. But if we, if we create the new classrooms, you'll have to move. If you happen to be last in, last out, or lottery, and we haven't really decided yet. But Marcia, I think you had sort of played around with this idea a little bit. And what are you thinking?
This is something I go through every summer when I place kindergarten students and also when I place new students to the district. And families don't always get their first choice. And when that happens, I do hold a lottery. And anyone in the district office can tell you, I walk around with an envelope with numbers, and I ask people to pull those numbers. So that's probably, that's most likely how we would do it in the event that we absolutely have to move families. When that happens, there is an appeal process. Usually, it's me, and then it's, then the superintendent. We do our very best, but it's hard.
It would be, would be us most to place new students to the district first.
Absolutely.
Rather than moving current students.
That's always my preference to moving a family that's already out of school. And do you want me to consent? There are a number of things that are taken into consideration. The first is whether the child has special needs. For example, in IEP, we don't always have all the same services available at the same site. So that's the first consideration. The second consideration is a sibling. We try to keep our families at the same school. We're not always successful with that, especially our later enrollment families. I've had to split families, more families this year than in the past. There are some program considerations that we have to take into, that we also have to consider. So there are a number of things that go into those decisions.
Yeah. And I guess, I mean, I can, you know, I'll follow up with an email request for clarification information as well. You know, I would like to see, you know, what's, what the numbers would look like if there were no moves at all. Because I think, you know, you have these scenarios where, you know, families and, you know, are moving around. Well, you know, what if we just add a teacher at each school and no one moves? What does that look like?
I can show you a number of those alternatives. What happens is, because we're overcrowded at all three of our schools at specific grades, and there are multiple grades, we don't solve the problem.
Okay. I think, I would like to see those numbers. So just so, you know, and I think that, I think all the families would want to see what those numbers look like.
But each, each additional teacher that we would hire would cost us, on the average, of $80,000, correct?
That's my understanding.
So if you were to move, I think, I mean, if you were to add one teacher, first grade teacher at Marin, for example, and no, no moves, then second and third would be crowded as they are now. First would be very sparse.
Correct.
A nice low, maybe 18 per class.
Or you could look at the combinations, when we did the combinations, we did a 1-2 and a 3-4, a 2-3, trying to avoid moving families, but it still doesn't solve all three or four grade levels.
I think that's.
I just want to tack on to, just to put around this thought.
We need you to be here because people are, people want to see you on the screen.
I'm Jennifer Mitchell. I'm a parent of two students at Marin Elementary. And one of the things, it just makes me think, is that could we look at the option that's sort of the most favorable for next year with three teachers, but without having to move students, could we possibly look at paraeducators to fill some of those gaps next school year instead of having to move students? I mean, I think I share everyone's concern here about moving students, whether they're my own or, or anyone else's. And so, I mean, is there, is it an all or nothing? Or can we bridge the gap somehow? We are, this is not the next, this is not the last time we're going to be looking at class size and looking at how to, how to manage this. So this, to me, is a short-term solution. This is not a long-term solution. So it seems that you would want to look at some other options to bridge the gap. We're going to have to look at this again. That's all I wanted to say.
So to clarify, are you suggesting, for example, that we had, we had one class, first grade to Marin, for example, have that be fairly low numbers, then we'll keep the 27 in second and third, but we'll have paras in those two classes and then not move anyone?
That's another potential scenario. I think that could be considered. I was thinking more of, what would it take if you added the three in each? And again, I mean, I think we can shuffle this a little bit like you're suggesting. But what would you, if you took the three at each school, and that's where you, that's where you started, and instead of moving students, you fill in the gaps with paraeducators in those classes, you target the classes. Maybe parents might start, you know, I think you're trying to do an equitable solution, which I appreciate, but that may not make total sense. And so looking at how to fill in the gaps while you're trying to solve the problem in the long term. Thank you.
Yeah, no, it's okay. No, that's, it was absolutely perfect, because I wanted to talk about equity and how you all defined equity. Because ever since moving to Albany, I get the sense that, you know, equity is really important. It's really important to me. I feel, though, I get this sense that you all, and, you know, you can correct me if I'm wrong, you all defined equity as conformity. Everything's got to be exactly the same. Every class has got to be 23.67 kids. So two-thirds of the kids got to be in that class. And to me, that's not equity in this situation. Equity, I define equity as giving each individual school, because each individual school's different, each situation's different, giving them the resources and access to the resources that they need at that given time when they need it. And leaving it up to the, you know, the hardworking, you know, highly qualified professionals in our community to figure it out. And maybe a split grade is going to work in one situation, maybe it won't. Maybe a single grade will work better in another situation. Maybe I'm going to, you know, decide, you know what? I really want to take my kids to Cornell or Ocean View from Marin, because I want, you know, I don't want to be in a 26-kid classroom. And I'll, you know, I'll request that. I don't know. Like you said, it's, it's every morning, it's different. Every week, it's different. It's going to be different, you know, in July and August and September again. So that's, that would just be my only thing. I mean, we, we seem, it seems to be, I mean, we seem to be hung up on these numbers of making, making the numbers come out exactly right for every single class. And I, I mean, that just ends up, I mean, you can't do that. I don't think you can do that in a vacuum.
Thank you. And that brings up one other possibility for signings, which kids are going to move, which is, we could just let things fall out as they do and then say, there are 27 kids in the seventh grade, second grade class. Do we have any volunteers to move to another school to have a smaller class?
That, I mean, that makes sense. I have a similar question. The scenario that we're looking at on paper right now under, under option B, is move, is eight students from, in the second grade from Marin to Cornell, eight third graders from Cornell to Marin. How many new second graders do we generally get at Marin? Do we know that?
You wouldn't get any, because we've missed, we've reached their maximum class size. So they would, even if they requested Marin, they would not go there.
Right. Well, what I mean is, is instead of moving eight kids, eight new kids would be placed at Cornell.
This is my.
If there's eight new, I don't know how many new second graders we get in.
This is my, my third year in the enrollment office, working on that. And I would say it's highly unlikely that eight current first graders at Marin leave Marin, so that we have eight.
Of course, yeah.
We have a pretty.
I was thinking a different way.
Yeah, okay, so.
And I just wanted to say, this is not about Marin. This is, you know, that, that parents request Ocean View and Cornell as well, and, you know.
And I think, and I wanted to just.
Yeah, I confused myself.
And I just wanted to clarify about the preoccupation with the numbers. So to some extent, there is a preoccupation with the target of 24 or under, because if we go above that within a school, we won't receive a certain level of funding, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. With by school?
Right. But by next year, you know, once you take the K through three averages and keeping kindergarten low, we will, we will have met our target that we should, that we are being asked to meet by 2020. Well, we've already met that target. So.
Oh, but there isn't, but we, so, so we're not, if we, I see. So some schools, so that's, so what I'm saying is not true, because some schools will not have, school districts will not have met that target, and they will not receive any financial penalty until 2020. So that's just a clarification then. Okay.
Okay. Sorry, you've been cut off several times. Are you done?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I see four people waiting in line. I'm going to ask that that be it for tonight, because we still have to have our discussion and make some decisions. So please go ahead.
My name is Jean Chang. I have a second grader and a fourth grader at Cornell. I have a very brief comment. I don't have any prepared remarks. I guess I'm responding, I'm glad that the previous speaker brought up the issue of equity. I was a little bit disturbed, you know, different people have talked about the economics of the situation and how to balance out these needs. And I'm glad that attention is being paid to class size at the elementary school. But I'm a little bit disturbed that the calculation of how to fix the problem at the elementary school triggers a problem at another level. Because clearly, so, you know, clearly, all of us plan to go all the way through. And, you know, and I, I guess, you know, I don't have a lot of experience with this body, and I don't know kind of what calculations go in. But just from my own personal experience, I feel sometimes like there's this game of whack-a-mole that's happening, and there's an immediate crisis or urgency. And I just hope that as you try to figure out the numbers and figure out what the best thing to do is, that there's, that you can articulate a larger vision that works for the district as a whole, and it isn't this sort of reactionary or something that feels reactionary. And I don't want this sense that, you know, obviously, most of us are here because we are from the elementary school, but there's a lot of voices that aren't being heard in this body. So I just kind of wanted to make that point.
Thank you very much. Very helpful. Thank you. I was going to say something very similar, and I'm glad you said that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jesse Rothstein. I'm the father of a first grader at Marin. I'm also a education policy researcher on the faculty of the Policy School at Berkeley, at UC Berkeley. And I teach education policy and I do work on it. So it's interesting to see my work showing up in my real life. But, so I just wanted to emphasize the. showing up in my real life. But, so, I just wanted to emphasize the importance of figuring out ways to get the class sizes down. I think it's, I think we know, there's ample evidence that this hurts student achievement. It hurts student learning, it hurts their long-run outcomes. And I think that, that we need to figure out ways to get it down. I'm not going to speak to the logistics. I understand that there are challenges, and I, and I, you've convinced me that it would be, it wouldn't make sense to try to do it in the mid-year. But I do think that it's important to, to figure out ways to make that happen. There was a, I, there was a discussion among the parents about whether there was good evidence that reducing from twenty-seven to twenty-four really, really helps student achievement. And so I went digging in the literature. And it's actually kind of hard to find evidence on that, because when people do studies of class size, they think twenty-four is the large classes.
Right.
And they compare that to fifteen. And the, the big study was done in Tennessee in the nineteen eighties, which we don't think it was a super progressive education state. So you can find evidence, but you have to go to other countries to, to find classes this big. The other thing I wanted to say is that, I wanted to echo something Rebecca said about, about thinking forward, about how conservative we should be in terms of our reserve fund. We know that this state is, has a messed-up school finance system. We know that we're gradually coming out of the recession, and the state budget is gradually getting better. I think if you take current estimates and treat those as that's what's going to be in three years, I think you're being excessively conservative, because I think we know that the money's going to, going to get a little bit less tight over the next few years. And so maintaining a, a larger-than-required reserve at this time seems like it doesn't make sense. This is the time that you're saving the reserve for. Use it, you know, plan, put together a budget that, that calls for you spending it down, realizing that you probably won't spend it down that much, because the state, because the state revenue will come back up over the next few years. It's all stuff there. Thank you.[700.88][700.88](APPLAUSE)
I'm Carrie Donegan, second grade teacher at Marin and ATA co-president. I just want to reiterate also what someone said about the kids coming through this unscathed. I, I don't think you just measure children's growth through school by, by scores. And I think that's what we've been doing. We keep looking every year at the star scores and say, we're making what we need to do, and so therefore, we're, we're doing okay, we're not. I think you could talk to any teacher in K through three, and we could tell you all of the things we've had to take out of our classrooms, all the things we are no longer able to do, everything we see in the classroom now, not only with the larger classes we have, but knowing that at this point, they've had larger classes since kindergarten. And it's enormous. You don't build the relationships with the children that you do with the smaller class size. And relationships is the heart of education. True, meaningful education is when the teacher knows those children, and knows how to reach them, and knows how to support them. And that's all been affected hugely. So I would say they have been affected. Second of all, I am really disappointed to hear that there have been four meetings and no teachers have been included in this. I am continually impressed by how intelligent and articulate our teachers are, and knowing that they've been left out of this discussion about how best to utilize aides and how we could work with that. I think that's terribly disappointing. Kim and I are supposed to meet regularly with the superintendent, and I believe, what, three out of four, or three out of five of our meetings so far this year have been canceled. And so, this level of communication, which already was not strong in this district, has been just pretty much obliterated. And the level of frustration there, I can't even go on. Peter, I, I don't see a little online survey as talking to us about how we could utilize aides in the classroom. I appreciate that you began that and maybe started to reach out, but teachers don't get a survey monkey, or whatever we call it now, and say, I teach math at this times on this day, and that therefore should be our conversation. This, this goes right to all the other communication issues. We should be a part of this, because we are flexible, and we are willing to work with each other, and we are willing to do whatever we need to do to make sure that our children receive the support they deserve. And part of the problem that that's not happening is because we have been left out of the conversation for so long. One of the reasons that you see us at so many more meetings than you ever used to five years ago, is because there has been just a systematic, you know, dismissal of our, of what we believe is important. It's, what is said and what is done are two wholly different things. What is said at board meetings is not what happens back at the sites. And you need to know that. And lastly, this twenty-seven, we'll give aides, two-hour aides to twenty-seven, we have repeatedly told you that's arbitrary. You know, the class right next door with twenty-six somehow doesn't get any support while this person gets, I mean, that's just ludicrous. You know, we, we've said this time and again, and yet, once again, another example of just being dismissed about that. We seem to have just glossed over the whole issue of moving ACC into the classrooms after school. I tell you right now, that's going to have a huge impact and, and create a huge dialogue, because if you don't recognize that moving daycare into classrooms at the short period that teachers actually have to concentrate and focus and grade and organize and meet and make phone calls, that if you don't think that impacts us hugely, then, again, you're not listening. You're not coming into our classrooms and seeing what we do, even after school. You know, we, we don't stop working at three o'clock. None of us do. And lastly, I have presided over enough of our ATA meetings to know that there is not wiggle room at AMS. Those teachers work their tails off. And to suggest, as the other parent did, that increasing their class size to sort of help us down at the primary level, that's not right. We shouldn't even be entertaining that discussion. They, they have just as many struggles and difficulties and needs and everything they're trying to do as well. And so, I guess, in closing, I just hope, and I, like, really hope, that teachers will start being brought into the conversation. And not just lip service, and really bringing in the parents with that as well, because they've said a lot of fabulous things tonight. But, I don't know, I guess we'll see.[1021.35][1021.35](APPLAUSE)
Good evening. My name is Omar Romero Hernandez. I have three kids in Marin School. Omar, Marianne, Pablo, I promise I will be quick. First of all, I, I fully agree with all that has been said, that, okay, ninety percent of the statement. But very important, I still feel that in the board, there is still, you haven't quite decided whether you should spend the money or not. So the only little part I will add on the comment beyond the wonderful presentation that many parents have made, is that usually in strategic planning, the reason you want to have a budget, the reason you want to have a reserve, is because you want to fulfill a mission. The academic mission we have here in Albany is clear. We are here for our students. We're here for our teachers. So I, I just don't see how we will just place the heat on our kids this year, because we want to have a reserve, we want to keep a very high reserve, so that if eventually, we need to use it, we'll be able to use it. Well, this is the time. We must use it now. And I will step on that, because many wonderful comments on, on budget have occurred. And, but the other part that it's important to mention, number one, recognize all members on the board, Marcia, and your work. You come here with, with a series of options. That's a wonderful, positive first step. But very important, this is, these are just a fair set of options. I believe that they need to go with more clarity. We need to deep-dive on the numbers. We all trust, don't worry whoever made the numbers, it's not that. But in every single place, when there is a board, when someone has to report, when we really like transparency, the key word, then any person should be able to look down into how they elaborate any number. And that is not an option. That's the right way to do things. And very important, I really encourage the board and all members here, that please, no decision should be making, should be made, if we don't make sure that we explicitly incorporate our teachers. If we don't make sure that we ask them explicitly what they want, what they like. I know it's very important, we have here our principals, we know they are very concerned about all these issues, but they are just another stakeholder. Very important, very valuable. All I see as a parent, and I also volunteer, is that the people who are always there since eight in the morning till three o'clock, and they have to deal with twenty-seven kids, are the teachers themselves. So asking the teachers, in my view, is not an option. It's a basic responsibility that we own them. We must honor that. So I encourage everyone to go beyond the survey monkey, or whatever thing that is, and really, really, get at least five, ten teachers from each school. Ask them straight, what do you think, you, what guys, you are the guys holding this problem. What do you want? What's your opinion? That's very important. Thanks for letting us express our opinion as parents. We, we are appreciative of that. Thanks for bringing that over. But teachers, they must be here. And to my surprise, it's been many months that I don't see that happening. I've been in this board for many other reasons, but the constant thing is that we don't see our teachers here. Very last one, I promise I will try to be short, I couldn't, I'm sorry. For every plan, now that we have options, we must also see deadlines. In other words, saying, by this week, we must make sure that either the union had something, some people on board, or we move to the next step. In two weeks' time, we must have either this other type of volunteers or so. I couldn't see any specific deadlines on that, and it's important for all plans. I, I gave my name at the beginning, and also, with all my heart, I'm happy to help, just need to reach out in all these things. But I just wanted to share this tonight. Thank you.[1262.15][1262.15](APPLAUSE)
Okay, thank you for everybody who contributed. We're now going to go through the board. Just want to remind you that this is not a voting item, but we do want to give direction to staff. And I don't think it's the role of the board to say, you must hire X number of people by X, you know, such and such a date. I think we want to direct the staff in a more general way, and say, keep within such and such a budget, or spend down more of the reserve, or, you know, those sorts of things. Not specifics, because specifics go beyond the, the role of the board. With that in mind, and keeping in mind how late it is.
And all the counselors who've been sitting in the back for, those are my children back there.
Right. So if we just start with Chelsea, and we'll come down this way. Say what you have to say, and no more, please. Thanks.
No, thank you.
What, do you have any comments or suggestions?
No, I think I will bring the information to leadership at Albany High, and add some of their input before reporting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea.
Ron.
And when you, when you talk to leadership, could you talk to them about the possibility of some cuts at the high school, since that impacted the high school?
We haven't just talked about it yet.
No, we can't. We have to do that in public, so it, we'll be talking about that later tonight.
We'll be talking about it later tonight, as a good.
Somewhere around midnight, I think.
Yeah, somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah. We are going to agendize it, and I hope we will have it next week. But, you know, we'll try to make that decision tonight, so we can get the notice out as quickly as possible.
My turn?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll violate everything you said. I'm going to be a little more specific, because that's what I think, you know, I know there's a borderline of what our role is. I'm strongly in favor, number one, in the long term, of adding at least three more teachers, one to each elementary school, without any impact on the middle school or the high school. That's my opinion. I'm going to be very vocal about it. I'm also, very much would like to find a way to add, as soon as possible, an aide to every K through three class that has enrollment over twenty-four, which means, those at twenty-five, twenty-six, or twenty-seven, as in scenario four. I also would like to add that I would urge staff to get direct input, not only from the side principals, but directly from the teachers at those levels. That's my opinion. Applause.[1452.83][1452.83](APPLAUSE)
Hi. I support option B for two, twenty-fourteen, fifteen. As soon as possible, that implies twenty-fourteen, but really get moving on it. I think that's where we have to be heading. And we heard a lot of creative ideas about how to get more paraeducators in the classroom at a lower cost. I would really like to see some input from teachers, as well as the community, on how we can get more, less expensive paraeducators in the classroom.[1496.61][1496.61](APPLAUSE) Glad to hear that many of you are ready to support a parcel tax. We've been, we've been talking about it for a while. A lot of other things come up, but this is a real priority now, it's clear. This didn't come up, and I'm glad it didn't, but I just want to say that the staff and our administrators have been looking very carefully in refining our population of out-of-district students. If that comes up, know that we're looking at it very, very hard, and trying to get the appropriate number of out-of-district students. We can benefit a great deal from some of those out-of-district students, but we continue to refine that. And so, that's somewhat an issue, but I just want to bring it up, so it doesn't come up. We're looking very hard at it. And again, I support hearing about more from you, from the teachers, about what's the appropriate plan for getting the class sizes reduced.[1581.42][1581.42](APPLAUSE)
Thank you, Alan. Pat?
I'll just, I'll just be brief. I'll just agree. I think, A, we need to get aides in and reduce the class, the class sizes. However, I agree with Ron, that at this point, we should not think about it as, as taking something away from the middle and high school. So in that sense, I am saying that we should spend down some of the reserve.[1612.61][1612.61](APPLAUSE) However, I look forward to seeing all of you clapping at the parcel tax meeting.[1623.11][1623.11](LAUGHTER) And I would also, the only other thing I would reiterate is, I, I would like to see the staff find effective ways to get input from the teachers about ways in which they might effectively use the resources that we give them.[1640.58][1640.58](APPLAUSE)
Great. Broadly agreeing. I do want to point out that we are spending the reserve already, so it's not as if we're not spending it. That has come up, so we're now talking about increasing the spending of the reserve. So I just want everyone to sort of understand that we hadn't just let it sit there. It's, we're going from eighteen percent down to six percent reserve in three years with the current plan, and that is very fast. But that said, clearly, we have to do something about the situation this year. So just first of all, I also would support getting aides into classrooms as quickly as possible. One thing I would say about that, if we look at the final plan, the option B for twenty-fourteen, fifteen, that's in gray, oh, sorry, that's the wrong one, the one that's tiered at the end of adding the aides, scenario four. So this is based on numbers of students in classrooms. That's perhaps one way to do it. Clearly, people will trickle in. I think another thing to look at, and I would echo my colleagues in encouraging the district to consult with teachers on the best way to do this, would be perhaps first and second grade first, or first grade first, that sort of thing, because we heard some of that tonight. I think it's worth just evaluating where to put people first, and how to do that most efficiently.
Yes, that's right.[1728.46][1728.46](APPLAUSE)
And then there's no question, we need a long-term plan for reducing our class sizes. That's partly going to be our facilities plan, which is well underway. We need to talk very soon, and we will be about rapid, potential rapid replacement of at least one of our elementary schools with a larger school. That's upcoming. People should pay attention to that. And, you know, if, if really we can get the whole city, I know everyone in this room will vote for it, but can we get all of Albany to vote for a parcel tax that would, that would actually cover the costs of reducing our class sizes? That would be wonderful. That's going to take some mobilization, and we need to think about that very soon, about how to mobilize people for something that would be on the November ballot. So that's what we hope to talk about in the next week or two. Anyway, so those are my thoughts on it.
Thank you, John.[1784.46][1784.46](APPLAUSE) Okay, so I pretty much agree with everything everyone has said. I don't really have much more to add to that, except that when everybody mentioned input from teachers. from teachers, and pretty much everybody said we don't want a negative impact on the secondaries, I think we should be careful to be sure that the teachers and principals of the secondaries are included in these discussions. We want their ideas as well. So if I can summarize, and anyone else can jump in and tell me if I'm wrong, but what I think I heard from all of you as direction to the staff is, we want to get going with the aides in the classrooms as quickly as possible. We want to find whatever ways we can to minimize the cost, but the board has expressed the opinion that they're willing to spend down the reserve faster than Lori has recommended, on the assumption that in the next year or two, we'll actually have more money than she's assuming. We know how conservative she is, and the assumptions she's using are very conservative.
That's right.
If it turns out next year that her very conservative assumptions were right, we'll have to readjust. But right now, I think that's her recommendation.
I've only heard... I want to make sure that I'm hearing this correctly. Ron suggested that we put a paraeducator in every class that was 25, 26, and 27. I've not heard anything to the contrary. I need to know if that is the board's direction.
That's a good question.
I thought you did not want anything very specific, because I did hear Jonathan say a very sensible suggestion, which is you might want to focus on the younger students.
Sure.
But I didn't feel that that was something that we should direct you to do. I thought you could consider some of those.
Well, I think, right, I think what we should do, maybe the approach we should take The way I would put it, I guess, is, you know, given the board's direction that we are willing to spend faster than Lori has recommended, but we do want some limit on that. We don't want to spend like drunken sailors, so...
Speak for yourself.
Yeah, having been one, I can tell you, we don't want to spend that way. That's still rather vague, but certainly as many paras as we can possibly get with...
You know, I mean, if it would take 26 paraeducators to do what I suggested, and we can only find 15, let's talk about that scenario, then I would be in favor of, you know, starting with the largest classes first, of course. Or starting with the, you know, the lower grades first.
But let me suggest...
That's up to staff.
Let me suggest that this should be up to staff with input from the teachers.
Exactly.
So we just want to strike a balance here.
To what extent?
I can't hear you. Please come.
You know, I don't care if somebody has 22 or 23. These TKs with 22 and 23 and the combination, that's crazy, you know? We're not going to get enough aides. We know that. So let us figure out how best to utilize them. We will share. We will do backflips. We'll do whatever it takes that people feel like they're getting the support they need. I don't care if somebody has 22 or 23, if they need the support, you know? And so I really, really appreciate what you said, Ron. This is in no way meant to squash that at all.
No, no, I agree with you.
But we will, we'll make it work. Just please include us. So, thank you.
It would be very helpful if you were to give me a dollar figure.
You want an actual dollar figure?
You said you want to spend down the reserve. You want to spend it down to 3%? I mean, I need some direction here.
Next year?
No.
Well, this is for the one-time funding.
One-time funding. How much money do you want to give staff direction to spend, which will tell me...
That's a fair question, because we don't really understand what... I don't really understand what the cost will be, so we need to know what...
Well, if we use the numbers that Lori presented, two hours a day for every K3 class that has 25 or more would be $355,000 and change, $355,000.
Maximal.
You know, I don't want to say that that's the cutoff. I think that that's... But that would be fine. And I think that then we could say, in my view...
But that's very helpful.
Okay.
Because, you know, we've given you scenarios all the way to, you know, one paraeducator for three hours a day in every class. So this gives us some parameters.
Right, so that would be my number.
So you want to say that exact number?
Even if you believe her numbers, and it was predicated on starting November 1st, and at this point, it's probably practical to only start December 1st, if you're trying to hire people and find them, and you've got a Thanksgiving vacation coming, you're going to discount those dollar figures by 12 and 1/2%.
That's right.
Right. Thank you, Marsha.
Right, and I think we've heard some good suggestions here tonight about how to minimize the cost, so I think we can probably get more aides than we're in the estimate for the same amount of money, so...
Don't stop hiring until every K3 class.
So what do we say, maximum of 356, maximum?
Okay.
Not to exceed, whatever we say.
All right.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Thank you so much for tackling this problem and coming up with some real solutions. I want to say, along with what Carrie said, that the teachers, we, yeah, we tend to teach math at the 10 o'clock hour, but we don't have to teach math at the 10 o'clock hour. We will be very flexible. I think you should look at the window all the way from, you know, from the 9:30 up until the 2 o'clock, because the more hours you can offer a person, the better off you are going to have a chance of getting more qualified people. And then we can share them around the rooms, and it's not a waste of time to have them there at lunchtime either. It would really help to have these people out on the yard at lunchtime. Sometimes they can even open up a classroom or a space, or the, an extra spot, and do a game, a board game place, try to take some of that pressure off the yard. That pressure on the yard is really affecting students. I'm sure it's affecting them at all the sites. If we can, you know, you can utilize people there. It's cost-effective. If you can get more people, you'll get more people if you have them there for a few more hours. They're going to apply for a four-hour position rather than a two-hour or a one-hour. So don't think that you, you know, "I'm willing to teach math after lunch, and it'll be great", you know? It'll be fantastic. And then the other, so that, I think it would really help with the yard stuff. And then also, you know, if it is limited, you do need to start down at the first and second, definitely, even before the third. You've got to look at those, because those, it's just tough, really tough.
Okay, thanks. I think we need to wrap this up now. So I think we have agreed on a $356,000 limit, but we've also agreed that we're going to solicit recommendations from the teachers and all interested parties to try to maximize the number of aides we can get for that amount of money. And...
We need to understand that we're probably not going to get that many aides we need.
Right. But we'll do as well as we can, and we want to go with the three, hiring the new teachers for next year to reduce class size. And again, we want to work with the teachers and all interested parties to minimize the number of students who have to move, but I think you already had that as a goal. Just look for the most creative solutions we can get in order to achieve that. And we're all going to work towards a new parcel tax. I think that's very well-established.
Could I make a request?
Yeah.
Could we just have an update on how it's going on the December 10th meeting? Because at that point, if you think that's enough time to...
I do.
Things should be pretty well underway.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
Good.
With the numbers on.
All right. So, Jackie, as, you know, just for the purpose of the minutes, although this wasn't a vote, it was a consensus of the board, so it can be recorded as a board action. And if you got all those points that I listed as recommendations, as an action, as recommendations, not as an order, but as recommendations to staff. And is it clear what the board has...
Absolutely. I think I've got it.
Excellent.
So three new teachers next year. Look for other ways other than to reduce FTE at the high school or middle school. Add in grades K through 3, any classes at 25, 26, or 27, not to exceed $355,000 and change.
So we're not... TK through K, TK through 3.
K through 3. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you all for coming. Thank you for your ideas. Of course, you have our email addresses, so...
Come back and talk to us about the parcel tax.
Also, if you're really interested in knowing about increasing the number of classrooms, we're going to be discussing facilities next.
Yes, we have a facilities report coming up. So we have the high school guidance action plan. We have student member report. We don't want to skip that.
There's going to be our student member report, then you're next. Thank you so much. She's good.
For watching you guys yawnin' right there.
Okay, if we can have quiet so that we can hear our student member report.
The week of October 28th to November 1st was Albany High School's annual homecoming week, and leadership actually received numerous staff compliments that all homecoming events ran very smoothly, and that Albany displayed friendly competition throughout the entire week, so that's good. Also, the American Red Cross Blood Drive was on November 5th, and it was also a huge success. Collectively, Albany was able to donate just under 40 units of blood, which is a good number. And lastly, last week was also the opening of Theater Ensemble's production, Fortenbraus, which is the sequel to Hamlet, and it will continue to show this weekend.
Thank you, Chelsea.
Thank you. Albany High School Guidance Action Plan. Thank you for your patience.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Michelle Azelstein, and I'm one of the counselors at Albany High School. The matrix is an overview of the comprehensive services that the counseling department provides, in line with American School Counseling national standards. You'll see in the column that says contact person, that person organizes the event, but all of us help in that area, so it's not just that one counselor. We would like to highlight what we do to support underrepresented populations to attend college. We define underrepresented students that are of Latino, African-American, low income, and/or first generation to attend college. We provide a ninth-grade, a four-year plan with a parents and students one-on-one conference. We do a 10th-grade college trip, which all students have the opportunity to participate if they're within the underrepresented population. Last year, we went to the University of Pacific and UC Davis. In 11th grade, we do college basics and steps to college. In 12th grade, we do letters of rec appointments, college application help, which we do provide computers after school and at lunch twice a week. We also do a financial aid night, parent night, a Dream Act parent night, Cash for College, which we also provide computers, so parents can fill out the FASA application or the Dream Act application. We provide the PSAT on a Saturday in the fall. Once again, thank you so much for the opportunity to come speak to you tonight. If you have any questions or would like us to go in greater detail, we would be more than happy to answer that at this time.
Pat?
You know, I had a whole series of questions, but when you sent those questions, I usually like people to get them ahead of time and not to be put on the spot. So you haven't... So if I ask some questions and you don't have the answers immediately, it's no problem. Just, you know, I, out of courtesy, I usually like to let you know ahead of time, since I wasn't able to, just let me know that you can go back and check on those. So the first thing I'd like to do is to thank you for your very, very hard work with all of the students, and I, when I read all the e-trees and all the emails, so, and I have a son in high school now, so I pay more attention than I used to, so all of the programs that you do are really wonderful.
Thanks.
So a couple of questions. I've been to a number of the presentations in the gym. You do the 10th grade presentation, I think, in the gym and so forth, and I've had a number of parents tell me that the presentations, English is a second language, that they have a difficult time following the presentations, you know, they're fast, the PowerPoints are kind of difficult. At the same time, I have had the principal tell me that you had previously organized meetings with Spanish speakers and in Spanish, and he indicated that there was low or no turnout. So I am asking, have you looked into best practices for how to efficiently and effectively reach English language learners or parents who have limited English? Okay?
So I'll speak to that. That's actually something we also have realized that we weren't necessarily doing. And this year, something we're going to be speaking with is Ms. Mongan, who is the ELD teacher on our campus. She provides ELAC meetings, so we're going to do a specific night where we have a college presentation with those parents. It's going to be with a Dream Act also, and so we were going to address that at that time.
In addition, we go into the ELD classes, oh, I'm sorry. You usually talk loud. We go into the ELD classes during course selection sheet time, and also during other times to be able to address any of the concerns that they have. And then Nancy Mongan is also very good with coming to us to say that this student is eligible for college, or what do we need to get this student in, and we definitely make sure that we help that student, such as giving them two English classes, or telling them what routes they need to take in order to be eligible for a four-year institution. So they have the support as far as the students. Now, the parents, a lot of them meet with us one-on-one. They make appointments with us, so we meet with them outside of the huge presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. The other questions I'm going to ask are, there's a theme in them. I'm thinking you work very hard, you're very busy, you have a huge student-counselor ratio. So what I'm looking for here is, I'm looking to see that you've been using some long-term strategies, or you're developing some that are really research-based or best practices, that you know somewhere else that they have really worked for this population of students that you're trying to reach. And so I'll kind of be asking you, probing that a little bit. I want to make sure that, you know, you see that. So the Steps to College program, have you done that in years past, or is this the first year?
This is the first year.
Okay, so one thing I was noticing about it, you know, the, I'm not an expert in this area of research, but one of the things about reaching this population of students, you know, the upward-bound programs and the programs that have been known to be successful to reach these populations of students and to get them to four-year colleges are often fully funded programs in the summer. And I noticed that this program has them coming after school and so forth, and to add to that, I would say that, you know, Albany is only so big. We don't have an endless pot of money to, you know, to fund things ourselves, but there are many, many programs that some of our students could be eligible for if they knew about them, if they knew that they could apply for them and that they would get scholarships. So do you have a strategy for matching these student populations that you're talking about with those opportunities? And it's fine for you to tell me, we don't have the time for it to do that. You don't, you don't give us enough resources to do that. That's what we need to know, too.
Well, the bottom line is, we don't have the time to do it.
Okay.
In addition, but Dr. Barone does do the, take the time to research this, and so he's the one who researched and did the steps to college. That's coming up in the spring, and then we're going to continue through the fall, and then hopefully continue it from here on out. In addition, we are... I lost my train of thought. Lost my train of thought.
You want to talk about it?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to say, some of the programs that you're mentioning, having come from the career coordinator position before...
Right.
That we advertise in, you know, Future Focus on our website, we do in our counseling meetings every week, have those programs come to our attention and strategize about specific students, along with the administrators, that we want to target, and then call those students in and talk to them about these programs. So we're doing that. It's, I wouldn't say systematic, but we are doing that on a regular basis.
And as far as scholarship opportunities for seniors, that's what, I lost my train of thought.
It's late.
I am, right. I'm a part of a historically black organization, sorority, and so, and I'm also part of the Panathinaikos, which is the Divine Nine, and so I always bring students the opportunities to apply for the scholarship, who are able to go to community college or four-year institutions. And so what we do is, we do a query of those students who are in that population, and we single them out and bring them into our office and say, "Fill this application out. This is an opportunity." And so it's anywhere from $500 to multiple thousands of dollars, they're given the opportunity to apply for. So we try our best with what we're, you know, given, but we definitely do. And then Ms. Azelstein is in charge of our scholarships on our website, and so anything that we have, either Ms. Fan puts it up with internships, or different scholarship opportunities for younger grades, and then Ms. Azelstein puts them up for the seniors.
And Future Focus is still...
Future Focus is still, yes, on the website. Future Focus is still, yes, on the website. Mm-hmm. Yes.
Thank you, that sounds wonderful, given, you know, how little time you have.
I feel like a lot of us have good resources that we're aware of, either because our students are a part of them, and they, maybe they're the ones that've come to tell us about it, and then we'll reach out to additional students, like I have a lot of students that are doing the Y Scholars Program through YMCA. I learned about that from a student, I have since recruited other students to join that program. What I think we're, what we're trying to kind of work on as a counseling staff is to make sure that everyone knows about that program, not just me, because my students are there. And so I think one of the big goals will be to kind of make a, like a list, literally a list of different opportunities that are available, and so that we all are giving our students the same information. So that's one of the goals that I've, I have this year.
Thank you so much. And then I think I have one final, I was going to say, thank you so much for doing the Dream Act workshops, you know, I feel that the legislation's changing, there's new stuff, families want to know, so, you know, those are really important. You do those in English and Spanish, I assume, or?
So, I'm going to be doing it in English, but there are, the website has the PowerPoint that you can change for language, because Spanish isn't the only language for our students, you know, so we try to do.
Who might have Dream Act needs.
Who might have Dream Act, right.
Excellent, okay. And then, my final question is about the PSAT, you know, I had been observing that other schools, other districts have gone to having the PSAT given during the day for free, and I assume that is extraordinarily expensive and has not been within our means. And I also know that it may be in part because some of those districts may have more students who qualify for free and reduce lunch, and then get the waivers. So, I'd like to know if you ever considered it, and also, I am wondering if you have, if you are specifically identifying students who can, who can get these fee waivers for AP tests and, and other things, and if you let them know in some way, because I'm not sure that's a general thing that people know about, if, maybe you do, so I'd love to know.
Yeah, absolutely. So I don't know that we've talked about offering the PSAT on the Wednesday date that they offer it. I've worked at a school that has done that, it was a private school. The way the PSAT ordering is set up, we have to guess at the number of fee waivers that are available the year before we give it, and it's only available to juniors. So we certainly could look into that, but it's been sort of prohibitive, just.
No, I'm sure, because our population is different. I would like to know, do you know what percentage of 10th and 11th graders are actually taking the PSAT on the Saturday?
We had 300 10th and 11th graders about evenly split between 10th and 11th, so if the classes are about 300 each, then that's about half, half of each class.
So only about half of each class is actually taking the PSAT then?
Mm-hmm.
That's really interesting, you know, there's been some recent stories or research about how just by taking the PSAT, you can increase your score on the SAT by 140 to 160 points, I mean, just access to being able to do that test. Thank you very much.
Yeah, can I say one more thing?
Sure.
I do think we saw a greater increase in 10th graders this year, and I think that's in part because we moved our conferences, our individual conferences to 9th grade, so we all talked about the PSAT in our 9th grade conferences with the parents and students we were meeting with. So the percentage, I don't know what happens to 11th graders, I can't explain that, but the percentage of 10th graders grew, so I'm seeing sort of a expected rise in the overall students who are taking it.
So I'm going to stop dominating, and I want to say again, I want to thank you, you know, because my son is at the high school now, and, and I see a real variety of kids, I know many of the kids there, and I think a lot about talent, you know, about the kids who are first generation to college, who don't know how to access so many of the things that other people who have parents who know how to have the system, so your role is so important, and I wanted to know more about what you do for them, and it's great what you do, thank you.
And, and we just wanted to address something that you kept mentioning, time to be able to do things.
I understand.
And so, what we wanted to let you know was our case load breakdown, because we're not all full-time, only two of us are full-time, we're full FTE, and then she's 80%, she's 60%, and then Diane Peterson is only 2, point two. So, we're, not everyone is here full-time, and so when we're doing these things, we're giving up evenings, you know, just on our own, because we know that it's a benefit, and we definitely want to make sure that we serve our students well.
I know you're doing a lot of evening meetings, and we really thank you.
Just like tonight.
Yeah.
How you doing?
Ron?
Yeah, I actually would like to speak to that a little bit, you know, because I have a, a pretty strong bias, you know, in my, in my mind, I have a bias for two reasons. Counselors really are the heart of, of the day-to-day existence for kids, for the high school students particularly. And I spent most of my career as, as a counselor, junior high school, middle school and high school. I also have a bias because I hired three of these four people, which, which was great for our schools. There's something missing from the plan, though, so I'm just going to, and I might be addressing this partly to you and partly to, to staff. Personal social is only mentioned three times. I know.
We do a lot more.
That you do, a lot more than that. The day-to-day need for counselors on a high school, you know, I'm, not only the data, but my personal experience.
This is just a snapshot.
Students, students need their, counselors and counselors need to be there for them, for whatever personal, social, emotional needs they need, and they, and when they need it, they need it then. And I, I've expressed before in public, what, yeah, I'm concerned about when, when students need a counselor, and that counselor's not there because they're part-time. And so that, that is really something that I'm addressing to staff, not to you, because you guys do a fantastic job.
Thank you.
So I'd like to find a way to have as many counselors there when students need them as possible. And I know, you know, I know case loads at other schools are way larger than ours, that doesn't mean that 325 is a great number.
And we also have a great mental health program, too.
Thank you. Right now, I need to interject, it is 9:30.
Yeah.
And in order to continue, we need a motion by the board. We still have a facilities overview report and several action items, including one that Bron pulled from the consent calendar.
Yeah.
So, I'm going to ask for a half-hour extension.
Move to extend one half-hour.
Second.
Okay, go ahead, Ron, did you have more questions?
No, that's it. I just wanted to take that into consideration, and, you know, I think, you know, it's really important to, the day-to-day work that counselors do, you need to highlight that. It's for at-risk, it's for.
General population.
The, the whole bell-shaped curve, and so that nobody falls off.
Thanks, okay. Anyone else? Alan?
So I only have one issue. In the 9th grade, we have an at-risk PBD pending for semester grades. We have a number of students in the achievement gap, we have a number of students in the school who probably are not going on to a two-year or a four-year college, they're looking for a job. We have a couple of job shadow days, but what do you do for the kid that wants to go out and be a plumber? What guidance do you give that person?
Go for it, first of all.
Well, but if he want, if he wants an education that's going to, that he's going to get in high school, to prepare him for his.
Right.
Service to the community.
So what we do, in September, we go into the senior classes, and we talk to them about their options after high school, so we address the four-institution, as well as the two-year, and then the trade-in vocational. So the plumbing would be, or refrigerator repair, all of those would be in the vocational training that we talk about in the fall.
And I would just like to add that when, we work a lot with those students, those are the students we see, you know, multiple times a month, probably. When we get at what their goals are, if we can get at what their goals are, and a lot of times in 9th grade, it's very unformed, we help them, we help them do that research, and that's a very individual process, you know, it's kid by kid, so if we don't know about a plumbing program, we're on the internet looking at plumbing programs with them.
Because if you've got kids that are at risk, they're looking for something else, I suspect.
We're helping them fill out a work permit so they can get a job.
That's right.
So there are internship opportunities provided, and those kinds of things, the after-school work programs, and, so you're advising the kids on what's available there. Thank you very much.
Haga Fan is also a resource for them.
That's right, I do know that, thank you.
What percentage time is her position?
Sixty. She's there Tuesday through Thursday.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks, John?
Nothing else, just to say, thanks very much, and really, I appreciate this table form encapsulating some of the stuff you do, adding what Ron was saying, all the stuff you do day-to-day, so, thanks a lot for everything.
Yes, thank, thank you, too, I don't have any questions for you, but I really appreciate the work you do, it's extremely important for our kids.
Chelsea had a question.
Chelsea?
Or a comment?
Oh, no, I just had a comment, and I just want to say that the counselors do put in a lot of work, like, just for the seniors alone for college, I know Ms. A stays after school on Mondays to help individual students work on their own personal applications, and the counselors are open at lunch Tuesdays and Thursdays at lunch to help with applications as well, so I just really want to say thank you, because it's really helpful.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, for all you do.
Yeah, we're so sorry you had to stay so late.
Good.
Access speed, right, while we continue on.
Thank you very much.
Did anyone from the audience have any questions or comments?
Excuse me, Board Member Lo, I just wanted to confirm that I did get a chance this morning to send your questions to Dr. Barone, and your questions were answered in the same way by our counselors, and on behalf of staff and Dr. Barone, I want to thank all four of you for being here tonight. Yep, he reiterated some of the same hopes and desires.
Well, they were so articulate, they were answering my questions on the spot, I just don't usually like to.
No, of course not, of course not, but with the, the Veterans Day weekend, we came in today to be able to get the answers for you, and then maybe getting him the chance to meet with his counselors, that, that part wasn't, wasn't possible, so, thank you.
They all called my lawyer.
Thank you.
I was impressed, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay, we have a staff report on facilities.
Can we maybe adjust the, I'm not sure if we can handle the entire remaining agenda.
Actually, I think if we can get through the facilities overview, I think the review and action items should take less than a minute apiece, unless you have a long discussion on your own.
No. I just want to make sure everybody agrees to that.
Let's give it a shot.
I'll give it a try.
All right.
Okay, so, tonight, I want to present some of the decisions that have been made so far on facilities, and some of the target dates that the board is going to need to make some additional decisions. So, tonight, we're going to talk about master plan, the McGregor campus, Major E bonds, seismic mitigation application for Marin and Ocean View, and then finally, financial hardship. So, we, you know that our draft facilities assessment is online, and it includes the, you know, a number of services contained within it, looking at architectural, mechanical, plumbing, et cetera, et cetera. It includes parent and staff input. Now, the next thing that will happen is the facilities steering committee needs to hear what the approximate costs for bringing site code, compliance, and improvements to each of the sites, and then prioritizing that. So when you get the document in December, you will have a series of priorities that have been already established and recommended by the facilities master plan steering committee. You don't have to necessarily accept them in the order in which they're being recommended, but that's what you'll receive on the 10th. Any questions about the facilities master plan? McGregor campus, we've vetted with you the, the issues that McGregor campus holds, you've made a decision to abandon the McGregor campus, and you made that decision on the 29th of October. You decided to demolish McGregor building, summer 2014, and you've contracted with WLC to create those demolition documents. You've also directed us to find alternate housing for 14, 15, for all the current folks that are there. You have directed staff to present options to you for portable classrooms at the McGregor site, and those will be coming to you November the 26th. On the 26th, you'll need to decide what type of portable classrooms to place at, on McGregor, now, you don't need, not on the 26th, you're going to hear the report, and then I'm going to bring it back on the 10th, okay? You'll need to decide what you want to do, what type of portable classrooms, whether to purchase them or lease them, and what funds will be made available to pay for the purchase or lease of portables.
So have some design documents at that time?
You will not have design documents, you will have photographs of the types of portables that are available, approximate costs to purchase or lease, and that includes an approximate cost for the architectural work that needs to be done, to present to DSA, and to have them cited.
So these are photos of existing.
Yes, different manufacturers, and, you know, a portable classroom is a portable classroom is a portable classroom.
Thank you.
Okay, yet you also have a sustainable option as well, a sustainable classroom, like the Gen 7s. Now, Major E bond fund. As you know, we have passed the $10 million bond, and we have spent $10 million, and, you know, plus or minus $300,000, to, to, to build the aquatic center. We applied for modernization and new construction funds, knowing that the state did not have the funds at the time, but we were in line. Now, we have received those funds, $3 million has come in, but the aquatic center is built. Now, does the money belong in Major E? And the question, and the answer is yes, it does belong in Major E, and it needs to reimburse the bond project, the bond fund. And so now, you're going to have 3.3 million, which is the 300,000 left out of Major E, and then the reimbursement from the state of 3 million, so you have 3.3 million. Now, the question is, what can it be spent on? Currently, the bond list, I've listed the bond expenditure list for you, it's very clear what we can spend the money on. It does say construct additional classrooms. We are getting a legal opinion on if those additional classrooms can be placed at an alternate site or an annex. If the answer is yes, we would proceed with the demolition of McGregor, and the placement of portables using Major E funds. If it's no, then the board must make a decision. Do you want to just leave the funds in as Major E, the initial, original Major E intended, and use them for additional classrooms, maybe at the key route site? Or do you want to take it back to the voters and ask for permission to change the use of Major E funds to include classrooms at the McGregor site?
And if we lose that vote?
Pardon me?
What, what's the contingency if we lose the vote?
The money would stay in the Major E fund, bond fund, and at that point in time, you can make a decision, keep it in the fund until you have enough money to build at key route, or you could pay down the bond debt.
And we could put portables on as well?
No.
Could we lease?
No.
So that space would remain empty?
You could lease the port, we would have enough money on an ongoing way to lease, we'd have to budget it, but we could certainly lease portables on, that would be a fallback position.
For the empty McGregor site?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So the seismic mitigation fund application for Marin and Ocean View. So, you know, we are at phase three, phase two, you have authorized us to determine whether the cost of rehabilitation exceeds 50% of the cost of a new school. So on the 10th, you will be presented with those findings. Those findings will be forwarded to, you know, with the proper paperwork to the state. You will need on the 10th to make a decision. Do you want to move forward with attempting to get, to, to receive the seismic mitigation funds? If you do, you will need to contract with an, with, and I'm assuming it will have to be WLC, to draw plans to do that, otherwise, we will not make, we will, we will not be anywhere near the timelines to even attempt to get the seismic money. You could stop this process on the 10th, if the board chooses, with no additional obligation. You know that you have the ability, at some point in time, when there's a state bond that's passed, whenever that is, and we have enough match money through the ability to go out to the public and pass our own bond, which will be the match money, you could then move forward to rebuild Marin or retrofit Marin and Ocean View at a more leisurely pace.
But then, we would have designed that in five or 10 years, the codes may change, and we'd have to.
Okay, you don't have to design Marin or Ocean View, you can stop this process on the 10th of December, you can say.
I thought we were going to bolt on starting it.
Well, or stopping it, either. If you determine. If you determine that you don't want to retain an architect on the 10th, the process stops.
I like this concept because I've been concerned that the...in the timeline presented by Watanabe from DSA, there's a very short time...
It's extremely short.
It's not even realistic and I'm a little concerned about it.
Right. I'm trying to get...to pin them down a little bit on, well, what happens if we exceed our timeline by four weeks, six weeks, eight weeks? You know, what are...you know, what are the...what...how does that diminish our chances? And of course, they won't give us any guarantees at all. And they've said very clearly, we don't know who's in the pipeline that will be ahead of you in getting out of DSA.
So that's all a mystery?
It's a mystery.
We have no idea who's behind, how fast they're going, okay?
Right.
I guess the other thing I'm concerned about is how much money do we spend before we get that preliminary decision to go ahead? And this design work that's done ahead of time could or could not be useful. That's the risk we're taking.
That is the risk you're taking.
We're caught in it, yeah.
Yeah.
But the goals are worthy.
So that's going to be a big decision that the board makes on the 10th. So I'm sorry, I went the wrong way. Finally, financial hardship. We are proceeding with the process. It doesn't hurt to proceed to put the application in. It doesn't necessarily cost us a lot of money. You do know that if we...if we just pull out of the process, no harm, no foul on this. If we continue with the process, it's imperative that the application be at the state for them to review. So we're just moving ahead as if you decide that you choose to continue this process to access these funds. And that is the end of my presentation. This will be placed on the website. We want to make sure that it's fully vetted with the public since we know that the special meeting was rather rapid and we'd want to really get this out to the public.
But necessary, I think.
Yes.
I have one question. With respect to the Major E bond funds use, you're getting a legal opinion. At the last meeting, we had two members of the bond oversight committee, one of whom I see in the audience tonight, warn us that...
No.
Oh.
There were two here.
There were two.
One of me.
Wasn't you, okay. But, well, at least you witnessed it. Warned us that even if we had a legal opinion saying that it was legal to spend the money that way, the bond oversight committee didn't have to agree.
Right.
What are our contingencies for that?
Well, after the money is spent, they could say, well, we don't agree, and then you'd get another legal opinion. You see what I mean? So the Major E bond oversight committee doesn't review anything until an expenditure has been made, okay? So then they review it. Now, if they say, no, we don't agree that you can use Major E bond funds at McGregor, I would then, of course, present them with the legal finding. And if they choose not to agree, then it's going to come back to you and could be ratcheted up to, you know, an actual challenge of whether that money was legally spent or not.
Okay. Alan?
One last concern. The hardship funding somewhat limits us, I believe, to expanding existing facilities and we're talking about expanding those facilities significantly at Marin. We probably going to need another source of funding, is that?
Yes, so to the extent that we are already overcrowded, which is what WLC has told us at each site, the state will take that into consideration and fund us for that overcrowding, the amount of classrooms that were actually overcrowded. But that's not going to be enough. My direction to the architect will be to give us a Phase 1 and 2 on both of those sites. So in other words, the state with the seismic mitigation funds and the financial hardship will build X. Then we will also have a Plan B or a Phase 2, which would be the additional classrooms that we think we're going to need. And then those would already be designed and it would be another wing or another, you know, another...the ability for us to go back to bond once the state has passed a state bond. So we would plan for growth, but we would not be able to build the entire campus the way we would want to plan it at once.
Okay.
And the $15 million bonding capacity that we still have, how does that play into all this?
Well, we have actually almost 15 million. That's not enough.
Not for the whole project, but it might be enough for expansion.
Not for the whole project. Now, let me tell you what you could do. You could always go out and ask the voters for more than you have a capacity for. And when you do have the capacity, then you would issue bonds and therefore then be able to build out both sites to the extent with which you would want to plan for growth.
Thank you. John?
Yeah, I just...I appreciate the idea of putting this on the website for, you know, public vetting. I think we might need a bit more of a process or a bit more of some exposure for the public of this information. And I was trying to think of ideas. One thing I thought of is that perhaps each board member could go to a PTA meeting and explain what's going on and why it needs to be quick if we're going to get this money because I don't want it to come as a surprise to the people that didn't look at the website, which I think would be a lot of people.
I think we ought to also do a couple of public forums and advertise them heavily and then have them try to gain maybe community center space, you know, and have them there. And I'll be glad to arrange for that.
So I have an Ocean View PTA meeting on Thursday. If you could give me some...
Sure.
Appropriate information to get the thoughts rolling. I'm not going to feel comfortable.
Yeah, I mean, I...
Talking points.
Saying exactly what's...
I think that's great. And I think certainly if people know that you're coming, you're going to talk about this, you'll get more attendance if they can get the word out. But I guess timing was the other issue. If there is a concern that...or if it's possible that we can just stop the process and decide we're not going to do it on December 10th, do we want to push ahead with a huge public information campaign?
Well, that might be the input we get from the public.
Well, that could be, yeah. Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry, what was that?
He was saying...
I said that might be the input we get from the public is that they want us to stop the process.
So that's why you actually want to get the feedback as soon as possible. Okay. I too would like to make sure I'm on point. So even if it's just like, if you're just taking this PowerPoint and you're just like...
Bullying.
Bullying, like, you know, highlighting what it is that you want us to talk about so that we don't go off into our tangent, okay? And then I would be happy to do that for my...for the school.
Thanks. Public comment?
Marcia Skinner, these are so outdated. I'm not sure how helpful they'll be, but as long as I was digging in my boxes to give you the timeline, a couple of board members had asked for...I brought some examples of the kind of thing that we did and I would tell you what we...when I say we mailed home or we flyer, they were this color. You know, I'm giving you the white copies, but everything was hard to miss. The people I'd be most concerned about would be the people who are extremely unlikely to look at your website.
Right.
And I know I've tried to look at your website about specific things. I'm computer savvy. We have high-speed internet. It's often a very uncomfortable process to sit there and wait seven minutes while it cycles around and thinks deep thoughts. So I think there are other ways you need to reach people. So the first thing is, one for each of you. This was issue number three. We mailed these Albany updates. So that's the third one of a series. People had those before that, but you can take one of those and mail it. This one that says, Dear Albany High School Neighbors, was a flyer that the board members dropped. I was board president at the time and assigned territories to the other board members and we each went out and flyer the neighborhood prior to the high school demolition to warn people that the demolition was coming.
Oh.
So that's what that one is. And then this was another bright-colored flyer that was also dropped in the neighborhood announcing that there was a special meeting in the Little Theater. So we were trying to reach people other ways. This is an announcement for a community center forum that the League of Women Voters agreed to sponsor. And what resources you have, you know, for contacting them or working with them or what resources they have now for working with you, I don't know. But that was how we got the community forum at the community center. And then this is the thing I had mentioned to you where we held a celebration to say goodbye to the old building. That's not so much PR as...public information as it's just PR, kind of after the fact. The other thing I brought one example of is when I said we got a schedule covering a two-week period so that all board members knew what was going on, even if you weren't the one that went to the facilities meetings and one board member was assigned to go to the facilities meetings. But this last one is just a random two-week construction schedule. I could only find that I still had one of them. But I would encourage you to get out and get active with the neighbors and let them know what could be occurring. People have concerns about dust. People have concern about noise. People have concern about their sightlines, their views, and I would encourage you to get out beyond the PTA meetings. That's not the big area of concern that I would have.
Thank you, Marcia. Your experience is very helpful to us.
And your filing system must be incredible. Now they'll discover how much you've researched the layout. It's one way.
Thank you. I wonder if we can move on as we're about out of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board on matters not on the agenda tonight? Good, then.
This is the latest we've ever gotten.
Review and action items. Ron, you pulled an item from the consent.
The only thing I had on that one was that I would rather see a report on progress on that every year rather than every three years. At least every year.
If you look on page two of your packet or if you...it requires only two changes that we could actually make tonight and you could...we could actually move forward. So at least every strike three and eliminate the S, so it would be...
Yeah.
At least every year.
At least every year.
Could you read the full sentence?
Yes. At least every year, the board shall monitor the district's progress towards the adopted standards for CTE.
Great.
I would like that.
Is that it?
That's fine.
That's it.
Okay, so all in favor of adopting this board policy? Have you have the number?
Board policy...
Are you making the motion?
Yeah.
6178.
I'll second it.
Second it, okay. All in favor of adopting this policy as amended? Fire.
Aye.
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 opposed? Good. That brings us to the recommendation to move temporary certificated teachers to permanent and probationary status. We do this regularly. Do we have any questions or comments on that one?
We've got an addendum on that.
Yes, we had a...
There was a revision.
Something gave us a revision, a revised list, just a...
We increased...we increased two FTE...I'm sorry, three FTEs to accommodate some additional FTE that we felt we had available.
Oh, great.
Right, and one went from one to .8.
I'll move the recommendation to designate certificated employees to permanent and probationary status as revised.
I'll second.
I have a question on the probationary two. There's Karen Friesen that chose zero. What's that?
It was revised to one.
That's revised. That means that she was not on our first list, but now is.
So it's Karen Friesen's.
Forgot it. That's revision. Okay, I didn't see it yet. Okay.
Good, all right. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good.
There it is.
Agreement for superintendent search services.
You're welcome. Thank you for your hard work.
Okay, last time we chose Ray and Associates for superintendent search services. We have the agreement in the packet. You've all had a chance to read it. Do we have any questions or comments on it?
Yeah, I have one comment. See if I can find it here now.
Should be page...
It was basically on item 16.
So that would be on page 89, I think.
Page 89.
Item 16, assist the board in establishing the interview format and developing interview questions. And I don't see anywhere in here yet that we're...we talked about involving the public in these interviews.
Yes, but the public are only involved at the very end in the actual interviews.
But is that in this statement that we'll be doing public interviews at the end?
It's in here somewhere.
Yeah, it is.
I double-checked, I triple-checked it and vetted it with...
Yes.
Okay.
The board president and...
Yeah, it's included.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Still want to dig it out right now. I'll find out where we do. I'm sure it's in here.
It doesn't exclude it, so I think we can do it, but...
Yeah.
He chucked, so I'm glad.
It's covered.
I'll move the agreement for superintendent search services with Ray and Associates.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And compensation increase for certificated management, classified management, confidential and unrepresented employee groups. Questions or comments on this?
Well, I think it would have been good to present this to the group of parents who were here to speak for spending down the reserve. It's pretty clear we've got a pretty rapidly declining structural budget deficit.
Tried to mention it.
What?
I tried to mention it.
You did mention it.
Well, I talked about 6%, which is the result of this.
Yes.
This clearly illustrates...I'm page 101, I think, is the...
If you turn to page 92, you will see that it brings us down in 15, 16 to 6%. That does not include CSEA.
Right.
Which isn't a big impact, is it?
No.
How many employees is that? 12?
Susan, how do we have a F...
A little over 100 employees, I bet you.
A little over 100?
I think it's larger than you first...
Many part-time.
That's not full-time.
Right, so...
Many part-time and lots of close...
Well, you've made it clear that you certainly deserve it, so...
That's right.
Okay, so...
You're last, so let's have you leave.
Exactly.
Sorry, no money left.
Anyway, that just contributes to the structural deficit even more, so...
Okay, so do we have a motion?
I'll move the Albany Unified...sorry. The compensation increase for certificated management, classified and confidential and unrepresented employee groups.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye?
Was there a second?
Second.
Oh, there wasn't.
Second.
Okay, Ron, I'm trying to push you too fast. Okay, sorry.
I was saving a couple of bucks, but...
Ron seconded. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the collective bargaining agreement with SEIU. Any comments or questions on that? Maybe we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the collective bargaining agreement with SEIU Local 1021.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, for board superintendent comments, we're even running behind our extension, but I would like to suggest that we have a special meeting on February 19th.
November 19th.
Sorry, November 19th.
November 19th.
I am tired. November 19th to discuss budget priorities and parcel tax and open for suggestions for what time we should meet and how long we should make the meeting. But I suggest that this be a special meeting. There will be no comments on items not on the agenda. It will only be to discuss this one topic.
Two questions I have. Number one, do we have enough time to make sure that the public really knows about this?
That's why we want it decided tonight.
And number two, will we be able to broadcast it?
That's a good question. What time would we have to make it?
We're still getting feedback about the last special meeting.
We can broadcast it, but we couldn't start any earlier than 5:00.
I don't think probably most people would want to start it earlier than 5:00.
Yeah, that's really important that I agree that we broadcast.
To get maximum public attendance, is 5:00 better, 5:30? To get maximum public attendance, is 5:00 better, 5:30?
Wait a minute, is that a board meeting night or not?
No, it would be a special board meeting.
It would be a special meeting. So, when would be a good time to get maximum participation from...
Later.
Later.
A little later, 6:00?
Probably, well...
6:00 or 7:00.
6:00 or 7:00. How much time do we need?
How much time do we need?
We usually start our discussion at 7:00, so...
It's like 7:00 to 8:30, is that what you're...
Well, I don't know.
I think, I think an hour and a half would should handle it.
We need, yeah. We took about two hours tonight practically to, for the discussion. So, if we have a lot of public comment, it could go longer.
So, could I clarify the exact focus of this special meeting?
We want to prioritize our budget, assuming that we get more money. We want to list in order how we want to spend it.
Oh, so this is not a focus on a parcel tax?
The parcel tax is going to be a focus of the meeting.
Could be what?
It's going to be one of the, there's two focuses of this meeting. One is to list some of the priorities. We've already set one priority by having our discussion tonight about hiring aides and teachers. And that's got to be our first priority for spending money because we've already decided to do it.
Right.
But what other programs, what other teachers do we want to hire? Where else do we want to put aides? What else do we want to spend money on if we get money?
Memory serves me right, Paul. We've had, I remember a Saturday meeting where we talked about prioritizing, and it was almost, it was more than a half a day.
It would take, I mean, if we're really talking about...
With public input, that's a huge...
You need staff input, teacher input.
You remember that meeting?
Yeah. I'm sort of thinking that you'd have to have a series of meetings, at least three hours each, that it cannot be dealt with in an hour and a half meeting. If we're just talking about a structural, structure of a parcel tax, because we do need to give the community that information of what a new parcel tax, how a new parcel tax should be structured, and the implications we have regarding the new structure.
I remember...
That's one meeting, but...
Okay. Well, should we have the meeting just on the parcel tax then?
That's a high priority. I think we should probably do that first.
I think if we do that, I mean, I agree with what everyone said. We should, we'll have to frame it clearly that we, that we will continue to have a conversation about what the priorities of the community are. Because if we're just talking about the legal structure of it, we're not talking yet, for example, a lot of people wrote about how they were very interested in the parcel tax in Berkeley, which particularly identifies class size reduction. And so, I'm not sure how, I think you would have to, if you're going to just focus on whether we're going to do one and what the steps would be and forming a committee and what the legal structure would be, that would be fine. But you would need to be very clear that in creating this committee or whatever, that a part of it is going to be inviting stakeholders to give priority. So, I don't know what order you want to do that in, but I just think it's...
Okay. So, let's set the meeting for an hour and a half, 7:00 to 8:30, just about the parcel tax.
What do you expect from staff to provide you?
Okay.
Good question.
So, if the focus is on, on the legal structure, then I think there would be a timeline of, would we need to hire someone to do some polling, A. B, what are their particular sample models other than I and J, like Berkeley's model that people keep talking about, that we might want to look at the language of? Because there has been such a focus on class size reduction. And the role of a parcel tax committee, or the role that it has played in the past, who might want, we might want to have participate, and when, and how, when should they begin meeting, and what would be their role, their goal? So, I'm talking on and on.
That's great, Pat. And could you reach out to Mary and see if she would come and attend the meeting? Because she led the fight, some of our past parcel taxes.
I would, I would be happy to speak to her.
Thank you.
I think one piece of information that would be very helpful is just numbers, if there are just some rough numbers for how much we would need per parcel to have X per year and so on. We could probably do this ourselves.
Is that clear?
No, that's a good idea.
Direction?
It is.
Good. Alan?
So, maybe instead of priorities, we could say justification for the parcel tax and list some of the things that have come up without getting into too much discussion, certainly the class size and some of our, I mean, I think we need...
Sure. What we're spending the parcel tax money on now that we're going to lose.
Right. Now, we've discussed this once before, a couple times before. Do you want those lists resurfaced on the 19th as well, or is that too much for the community to handle?
Which list?
The tiers?
The tiers.
Yeah, the list we did last year, a year before.
Yeah, you've done them.
I think maybe just a report of what the current parcel tax money is being spent on.
And then say that when we solidify what we're looking for, we'll be having some larger discussion on more finite priorities. But we have a list already.
Right.
I think that's really fair, because then people have some talking points to go out to the community with.
I mean, I just don't know, so we cut sports, almost $200,000 with the sports out of, out of our budget. Those folks need to know that we're having this meeting.
Right.
I mean, there's so many programs that are silently cut that need to at least be able to acknowledge, you know, their interest in having the district...
We just need to let people know that we can't have, you know, a five, the initial discussion isn't going to be the five to six-hour.
Right. We can't do that.
But that has to happen sometime.
Right.
Because people have a lot to say.
But I think that's why you just need to frame it as, that we're not doing that during this hour and a half meeting, but that we recognize that it's an essential part of...
Yes.
Right. So, it could be part of your timeline, maybe?
And maybe front-loaded a little bit with the, with some of the publicity.
Right.
I do have one thing I need to talk to you about in board and superintendent comments. We need to have a special board meeting or an extended board meeting to bring Ray and Associates in to talk about your timelines and to talk about superintendent salary, how they want to, how you want to develop the qualities that you're looking for in a superintendent. We currently have two dates that have been suggested by Ray and Associates. One is December 10th. On our regular board meeting, we would have to extend that board meeting, probably, they need about an hour and a half.
This is open session?
This is all open session, yes. So, if we were to perhaps move our regular board meeting a little bit earlier, like to 5:00, and move closed session to the end, we could have these conversations fully televised and very transparent to the public.
What's a good idea?
What else?
The other date would be the 12th, which is a Thursday. We still do not know whether we have access to this chamber, nor do we know if we can get it filmed.
Oh, the other thing about the 10th, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Alan, is, isn't that when we're making the facilities decision?
That's what I was going to say.
I thought you were...
It's a big agenda. And we would have to extend, once again, extend the board meeting. I would, I would say start at 5:00, do some of the items that are more routine, items that do not generate a lot of high public interest, and then make sure that the high public interest items are, you know...
Better.
Yeah, sort of channeled into prime time.
What's the other date that Ray and Associates are suggesting?
December 12th.
The 10th or the 12th?
Or the 12th. But Jackie has not been able to finalize, to even have a chance to see if we even have access to this building.
Oh, if we have...
Okay, so can we check that first?
Probably not.
Yes.
Probably not. I think it's zoning, planning, and zoning usually have that Thursday.
Right. I'm sort of, sort of forcing you into a, you know, I really, the sooner we get this process started, the better.
Yeah, we do. That's going to be quite a meeting on the 10th. There's a lot scheduled for it.
Alan?
Actually, I think planning and zoning is on Tuesday nights, but I suspect there's something like traffic and safety or...
Something.
Traffic and safety, yeah.
So, the 19th and then December 10th?
December 10th is a regular board meeting. It'll be a long board meeting. Okay?
Unlike this one.